That's better. Okay. Well, should be just a minute. All right. So let's call this. What is this work session to order on April 9th? It's about 4:05. We'll call it to order. All right. So with that, can everybody see the share screen? I'm just have a little, we're going to start with the Aunty Workshop presentation from Friedman Real Estate.
Did you want to do a roll call?
I didn't think we did roll call, did we?
Yes.
It's not on there. Sorry, it's not on the agenda, so. But I can. All right, so I guess roll call.
Mr. Cummings? Here. Ms. McGuire?
Here.
Mr. Spencer? Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Mr. Sutton here, Mr. Worcesterbarth?
Present.
Ms. Richards?
Here. Okay. So with that, I don't know how we're doing this.
Yeah, this is Joel at Friedman here. Thank you to the board for having us on your work session today. Really just wanted to go more in depth on the auction process with real insight. So to not waste any time, Kevin Lipton from Real In Play is on the call to field any of your guys' questions for what selling a building for Real Insight looks like.
Could you give the group a kind of a brief overview?
Sure. Kevin, do you want to go through kind of what that 45, 48 day process looks like?
Yes.
Kevin is actually muted, guys. I think there might be one more number.
Um, he was, I think sometimes when you, he was unmuted, but then if you.
Now I'm unmuted.
Yeah.
Yeah. I got, I couldn't unmute myself.
That's okay.
Thanks, guys.
Sorry.
That's all right. So thank you so much for the opportunity to potentially work on this asset with Friedman team. So let me just give you a little bit of color on our auction platform. So we use a platform launched in 2016. I'm part of CW Capital, which is a large financial services company. We've got about $200 billion. We manage different loans for institutions as well as what I'd describe as smaller private clients. And our auction platform is a way to create a wider audience in terms of marketing. We have 100,000 person database just within our own platform itself. And we market assets in tandem with a broker and it's a true partnership with Friedman. Over the years, I've probably done at least 50 deals with Joel and his team via auction. And the way the process works is we build out our webpage, the Real Insight Marketplace. We have a very custom marketing approach based off of each asset we bring on. So for your opportunity, we would be targeting like kind deals we've traded within Michigan, like kind deals in terms of tenancy as well as really price point. And we actually would probably be doing direct mailers to potential buyers in that market. We would do advertising through LinkedIn where we're able to target, call it the 10,000 likely investors in office in Michigan to ensure that they see your opportunity. And over the course of 45 to 60 days, it's really bringing as wide of an audience the asset as possible. And once they show interest and Joel and his team are very pivotal in selling them, the story on the opportunity, the investment thesis, where they need to be on price, they push them my way where I'm really, where I take over to get them registered for the auction. And in order to register for the auction, investors need to show proof of funds up to what they want to bid on auction day. And they need to sign our participation terms, which states that it's a non contingent sale where they're required to put up a 10% non refund deposit and close 30 days thereafter, no contingencies. So in order for us to get bidders comfortable going non contingent with no diligence period, day one of PSA, they'll, we'll actually provide a new phase one and PCR in most cases. Phase one is an environmental report. PCR is a property ignition report. We provide a title commitment and we provide them that contract. From the city, you know, the only two deliverables we require are for you guys to order title commitments, which is standard and really to just populate our form PSA. It's the same form contract we use when we're selling our own assets and it's pretty iron clad. And aside from that, you know, there's no responsibilities from the city. How we're compensated, we are compensated by the buyer. So it's a 5% platform fee that the buyer will pay on top of the bid amount that they actually end up winning at auction. There's absolutely no costs associated to engaging us whatsoever. If we don't hit your desired pricing, there's no requirement from your perspective to actually transact. For all intents and purposes, it's pretty much a free option from your standpoint to engage us. So we're pretty invested in every deal that we bring on because of the amount of money we're outlaying by way of marketing costs, third party reports. And we want to make sure that we actually achieve your desired pricing. Is there any questions for, for the board thus far?
I actually do have one. And so you said you have all those costs, including a baseline. So what if it doesn't sell?
Like I said, go ahead, please.
You just eat those costs?
Correct. That's right.
Okay.
That's right.
And.
We eat the cost.
And if it does sell, we don't get, I mean, for the baseline, we're not charged an additional price for any of those things.
That is correct. We do not ask for reimbursement.
Okay, all right.
So really, just from your perspective, it's just the costs associated with ordering a title commitment. That's it. Which you would need on any sale anyways.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, I had a question. This is Bill Palmer. How, do you establish a minimum bid or starting point?
Yeah, that's a very good question, Bill. Very good question. So typically, the starting bid is maybe a third or a fourth of the reserve price. So we probably have a starting bid of 250 or 300K. That's kind of our soft guidance to the market as to where they need to be on auction day. You know, Joel, my team, we don't want to tell people you got to be at 900. You say, look, it's an auction, show up, put your best foot forward. And in a perfect world, we have five to 10 registered bidders who are qualified, who understand the opportunity and has shown us proof of funds. And we hit reserve at 900 and then a bidding war ensues. We, as a platform, have a couple of tools in our toolbox to help encourage further bidding and move bidding along. Those are, we can submit seller bids and we can actually lower bid increments. And both of those will help generate more activity in the market. So let me give you a scenario. We're getting close to 900. And let's say we're at 400 and things kind of just stop out for a minute. We may submit a seller bid. And then the market tends to push things up towards 900. We will also lower bid increments as we get closer to that $900,000 reserve. Is that kind of conveys you're basically close to that mark? And it also makes it a lot easier psychologically for investors to click. So you could get to 900, you now have two or three groups that are still actively involved in the auction. And we have bid increments at 25K and I've seen it run up another 200 grand in some cases. Because the emotion of the auction takes over and certain buyers, they don't want to lose an opportunity over 25,000. Well, it adds up. So we'll go from 25 to 10 to five even. We want to extract every last dollar out of the market.
That sounds good.
Any other questions I can help with? Great.
Do we know what our minimum bid would be set at?
It would probably be 250 or 300. You know, usually we handle that on our side. And, you know, again, we don't want to tell people what the reserve is. Now savvy auction buyers, they always know it's about, you know, three to four times the reserve price is a multiple, three to four times of starting bid. But we'll, we'll handle that aspect. Really what's most important is, is setting a reserve, which we, which we have. And, you know, we listen to the market and hear what the feedback is once we get out and start talking to investors.
And then once you get to a final bid, then is what, what are the, what are the restrictions? What would be the restrictions on the township?
Yeah, so, so let's, let's just, let me take you through the scenario. We, we hit 900 and, you know, in a great auction, maybe it pushes up to a million or over a million. The auction ends. And even when reserve met is shown, sorry, let me take a step back. Reserve met is shown. That's when the investors know that the deal is going to trade. You actually see a lot more fervor in the market. Because a lot of cases, buyers will be fishing to see, okay, when are they going to show reserve? When are they going to show reserve? Once it shows reserve met, they go, all right, we got a live deal. This thing's going to trade today. Bidders cannot steal the deal at two or three seconds when the auction's winding down. So if someone puts in a bid at, what is that, 925,000 with 10 seconds, it clocks back up to three minutes. Also, when reserve met is shown and we lower bid increments, it clocks back up to three minutes. That gives the market more time to continue bidding. And it'll only really wind down when everyone else is gone and that top bidder is just left standing. So we get to 1.1 million hopefully in a great case and great auction. And it ends, my team immediately follows up, say, congratulations, here's your winning bid amount of $1 million. Here's the platform fee that's owed to the auction house. The wire instructions are within that cover letter. You will receive a contract via DocuSign for signature and we expect you to sign within two hours. Once they sign, it's routed to you guys for counter signature via DocuSign. It's always important that seller signs pretty promptly thereafter. Reason being is that puts the clock on them to put their deposit up. The deposit is due by 5:00 PM the following day. It's a 10% non refund deposit. There's absolutely no contingencies with the transaction. And then they're required to close 30 days thereafter. So it's, it's a tight timeframe. We get deals done in 90 to 100 days. And we get shorty of execution because that is a 10% non refundable deposit. So that being said, you know, we're looking at a June auction timeframe now. If we, you know, move forward in the next week or two, that means you'll be able to transact by July.
Okay, well, I, I like your scenario where it's up to a million dollars. What, what happens in alternate scenario where we start out at 250? And for whatever reason, we don't get past, you know, 350 and that's the high bid. Are we locked in then to that?
No, absolutely not. You guys are agreeing to transact at your reserve price. And you always have the ability to lower pricing to meet the market because, but we think 900 is a reasonable number, but we're only going to know that once we get out there and start talking to buyers. Now, what we also have with our contract is what's called the subject to approval addendum, which we always encourage cities or institutional sellers to use in the event that pricing doesn't get to 900. So for example, if we got to 800, 850 on auction day and we wanted to actually lock that deal in, so you have the ability to, to go deliberate internally and decide if you want to take that deal, you can do that with that subject to addendum. And there's no contingencies if you do walk away from that deal. So in that 850 scenario, we send in the auction end, it says, subject to sold. They receive a contract, there's an addendum in it that stipulates seller has a free option after 15, within 15 business days to accept or reject the transaction. If you guys decided we're not a seller at 850, you notify buyer as such, there's no fees associated to us. There's no fees associated to Freeman and that's it. If you come back and say, all right, listen, you know, they clearly made a market here. There was 100 signed CAs, they got 10 registered bidders. The market has spoken and 850 is a top bid. You can move forward and consummate the sale at that number. So it's a, it's a good sort of backfill way, if you don't get to 900, to still lock in a group with hard money and 10% down and sign contracts and then make a decision from there.
Okay, so is the, I see we have a agreement contract with Friedman in our packet for Monday night. Is the, is the typical procedure that you would, we would, we would have a listing agreement with Friedman? They would put the property on the market with all the various, you know, commercial listings, the MLS and those kinds of things. And then that would, that would build up if we didn't have a buyer that in June or at some time in the future, then we would go to this auction procedure. Is that, is that?
No, so it's, it's, no, we're gonna, we're moving forward together as a tandem marketing day one. So I have my own marketing agreement that you guys would be executing. And we would not want to have Freeman market this themselves first. That would make this listing stale. We, we would want to go day one out together through the platform itself, marketing for an auction. So you would be engaging my platform as well as Freeman Real Estate.
Okay, that, that makes sense. That makes sense.
Do we have any other questions? From the board?
I had one, how, and I don't know if it's actually for Freeman or for the township discussion for the board, but with the VA clinic being in a portion of Aunty, are we obligated to the VA clinic? Or is there an issue with auctioning the rest of the building off around them that we own or?
Any lease agreements there? Right. I believe we'd have to read the lease agreement, but I'm pretty sure the lease can be transferred. So that wouldn't have to be part of it as well, right, Kevin? Or I think you're, you're muted again. I got to unmute you. Sorry. Whenever you mute yourself, then.
This is Joel. We'd be selling, we'd be selling the property, you know, with a, with the lease in place basically as income as an investment sales as part of the deal. So upon sale, the lease would transfer over to the new owner and you guys would no longer have any obligations with the VA. That would, that would be on the new owner.
Correct.
But I believe there is something in the lease agreement that indicates that the VA needs to be approached first, if I remember correctly, for transfer.
Is there a roffer in lease agreement?
I don't, I, I'm just trying, I remember it from about, you know, six years ago. So I'd have to, we're, we need to take a look at that or have you take a look at it, I guess?
Yeah, I've sold a lot of
I could be wrong.
properties in the past. I, no, no, I'm not saying you are. I just haven't seen that. You know, in my prior life, I did about $250 million of the transactions of GSA assets completed VA. They never really had a right of first refusal.
Oh, no, I didn't mean a right of first refusal. They just had to be notified if the, if the owner of the building was going to be selling. So.
I understand.
Yeah, yeah. Not a right of first refusal. Sorry. That wasn't clear.
Um, all that said, no, we absolutely could still sell the asset with the VA occupying the property. In fact, that's critical for the sale.
Right.
And buyers are going to be looking at the income as part of the investment.
Well, sadly, we actually only have, everything else is a month to month in there right now. So the only lease that actually has an end date on it is the VA lease. Everything else is out of month to month.
But Alcona, and if I remember from our conversation, Alcona is moving into their new building sometime next fall. So, so really, even though they're month to month, we have kind of an assurance that they're going to be there through basically the time that their building is done, correct?
Right. Yes. Yes. And actually, I spoke with Carolyn Norman about requesting some kind of a, and she's working on that, some kind of an exit strategy. Obviously, it's not going to be an instantaneous move. The building's not going to be done and they're not going to move there tomorrow or anything. It's going to be phased in. So we need to get some kind of a timeline for them from, from an exit strategy. And, you know, they actually have cold storage in the building that they rent and everything else. So.
Okay. And just as a side note, if you, if you'd like to send the lease over to us at Friedman, we're happy to review it for you guys and double check on everything as well.
Okay.
Any other questions I could help with?
No, it sounds like an exciting process.
It's very fun come auction day. I promise you that.
It is. It's fun to watch. You can see when everyone is actually logged on to looking at the, at the asset itself. And it's, it's an exciting few hours, especially at the end there.
Any other board members have any questions? At this time? No? Okay. All right. Well, thank you guys. Yeah, thank you very much. Appreciate you guys zooming in.
All right.
Yeah.
Thank you, everyone. Have a great weekend.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, so moving on then to just discussion for Board Packet as a whole, right? Let me flip back around. Okay, so. I just noticed, actually, we have an error on the the public hearing. We don't have, that's April 26th. So there is no public hearing. We're going to have to amend the agenda.
Most recent download does not have that.
Okay, all right. Well, I must have printed it before that.
We're going to charge a late fee because we're not looking for the public yet.
All right, I can hear Jane in the background, Jamie.
Sorry, Jane. I can hear you talking. Do you want, I'll just mute. I can mute.
Okay.
He's on the phone with somebody.
Yeah, right. I know you're working. I'm just letting you know.
All right.
Okay, so were there any other changes, Mitch, I guess?
No.
So I know. Okay. Okay, well, good. Well, that makes you feel better that that's not on there. Okay, so we have some meeting minutes. Anybody have any comments on meeting minutes? We have the work session March 19th.
Yeah, and that one, we, again, we have Mr. Cummings and Mr. Spencer, both present and absent.
Yep, I'm there twice.
Oopsie. But they were both there. So we just need to remove that, Josh.
There's Mr. Cummings and who?
On March 19th, you have them, you have them there in absent. So Mr. Cummings and Mr. Spencer were both here, right? Okay. All right, anything else?
Yeah, and that, on the next line, the water meat extension discussion, where it says phases A, B, C, D, E, F, G, and part of H will be completed this year. That's, that's incorrect. Phases to be completed this year are A, B, G, and the F41 portion of H.
So A, B, G. And part of H. So basically, we need to remove C, D, E, and F.
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right. Anything on March 22nd?
No, that was all good.
All right.
From what I could tell.
Anything, um, sorry, I accidentally printed front and back. March 26th? Comments?
It was 11 minute, it was 11 minute meeting. It was 11 minute meeting. I like that.
Yeah.
We need more of those.
Jeremy and Steve are remarkably quiet. Have I muted them by accident?
No, I'm here. I'm good.
All right, just making sure. Okay. All right, so March 26th, we're good. Okay, so then annual meeting of the boards? Anything there? Nope. Okay, payment of bills. We have a prepaid run April 6th. And the amount of $80,000. And then.
Yeah. On page 16 of the packet, there's under the property O and M at Aunty, there's payment to Alert Services for March. In the amount 1150. These, these are payments that we make to them twice a month. And, and I guess this was missed as the first installment in March because I went back to the previous March meetings and there wasn't, there wasn't a payment. There was only the second payment in March, not the first payment. So I guess I'm not, I'm not clear why that payment didn't get made the first part of March. But then I also noticed along with that, on page 22 of the packet, under Aunty, under property O and M, there isn't a payment for April for the same company. So it seems as though there should be the first payment for April under this payment.
They're no longer with us.
They are no longer.
Oh, they're not?
Providing a service. No.
Oh, okay. Well, then that explains no payment in April. But, okay. So for some, somehow we missed the first payment in March. Was that?
I'm, I'm sorry, I have to unmute Jamie. So I'm unmuting her. She can answer.
So we were waiting to see if, because their contract hadn't renewed. So we were, Jane was waiting to see if we were going to get a renewed contract with them. And then after talking with Mitch and the owner of Alert Janitor, she, they were just going to work without a contract because she was going to no longer be cleaning for us, but would clean until they, we found somebody else to do so. However, that's not the case. They just quit the other day. So that's why they didn't get one in April. So we were basically catching up.
Yeah, but the one we're paying under this, it says it's for the first installment in March. So that's.
Because we missed the cutoff for, to pay, for the pay the bills. So it had to be on the next list.
Well, there was, there was a payment on March 31st.
Because in the meantime, we got the go ahead to go ahead and pay them with, because even though they didn't have a contract set up. So we got the go ahead. So then we went back after that check, right? And wrote the other check for the other one that we were still waiting for.
Okay, when, when, I just, I curiosity, when did their contract expire? Was it end of February?
End of February.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that, that explains it. Thanks, Jamie.
You're welcome.
Any other questions on the April 6th run?
I just have one question on page 16, just above that where Joe or Bill was talking. Foight Strategic Insights, is that the last payment for the marketing or the apartment study then? Was it split into two?
I believe it was split into two. I'd have to look at the bill, but I thought that was the final payment.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome. Yes, I actually have it right here on top as a matter of fact. And it says shipped and final.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any questions on the April 13th run? It's a bit larger. I'm sorry, does that $189 amount include the row invoices that are in the packet for approval or no? Those are, okay.
Right, because they haven't been entered yet.
Gotcha. Okay. So any questions on the check run for April 13th? No? All right, well, um, okay. We have the EIC director update, but that's just Monday night. And then we have Mitch's report. Mitch, you want to just go through each one?
Questions on the drop off refuge program? That's straightforward. Two is point of sale for Arson Hall non fixtures. So this is like tables and chairs and some incendiary non fixture type items. So they're offering us $10,000 for those non fixture items. And both Todd and I both concur, that's a, that's a good deal for us. I don't know what we would do with these extra items. So we're, we're than happy to dispose of them in that process. And that would be, what you would do is a point of sale would happen during the closing. You have the, the regular closing and then the point of sale would occur at the same time.
So it would be a bill of sale where we're selling the items as is with no warranties up there.
That's correct.
Okay.
And the dust control RFP.
Any, well, wait, do anybody have any questions on that? Because I know that was a question by a few board members. So I just want to make sure that the buyer met with Todd at the building. They went through, Todd's the one who took the pictures of all the items. She made a list. She, the buyer, made a list and did research on what she thought the value was. And then, you know, did some for depreciation, i.e. used equipment. So he's pretty dang close. She came in, she thought they were worth about 15,494 and that, that part was around 15,000. So for all that stuff.
Thank you. Appreciate you doing that.
That's tables, chairs, the refrigerator, all that fun stuff.
That's tables, chairs, uh, the, uh, the refrigerator, all that fun stuff.
Shaping dishes, any of the kitchen equipment, all of that. Yeah. Yeah, so she's offering 10,000 for that.
So, yeah, I think that's more than fair. Dust control RFP, that's just, uh, permission to go out for dust control. My hope is, uh, if you're willing, is whoever we get to do the dust control, let's go for a two-year contract instead of bidding this out every year. It's my understanding, we only get typically either one bid, and on occasion, we get two. So that, that seems a little excessive. Every year, we keep going out. If, if we kinda know who's probably gonna bid on this thing, why don't we book a two-year bid process and see if we can maybe even hold them to the same prices from year to year? At least, you know, give us that option, so we could maybe negotiate that out.
What dust are we controlling?
This is dirt roads, season on roads, so.
Yeah, once, uh, Mitch, this, Bill, one, one thing that needs to be added to that is to also include a price per gallon for partial loads. We had a, we had a situation last year where we, they, they, same company, I'm sure it'll be the same company, we've had that for years. They give us a price per gallon, and generally, it's around 80,000 gallons, but for some reason, last year, they came up and they, they ran low, and so the guys that were from DPW that were overseeing it, had them bring up a partial load. So when, when we received the bill from the company, uh, they had inserted in there a different rate per gallon for that partial load of a truck. And that was a bill that was called into question at the, at the board meeting, under the payment of bills, and I questioned that. And so I, I contacted the president of the company, and I explained to him, look, we, we, we can't approve this bill because it's not at the rate that our contract states. And he, he, he understood. I, I explained to him, you know, you guys do a great job for us, you've been doing it for, you know, a lot of years. And we don't wanna, I'm not trying to create a problem, but the contract specifies this much per gallon. And he says, well, you know, we, we sent up a, a partial truck. And when we, when we don't send a full load, we have to, you know, charge a little bit more. And I, you know, being in the trucking business myself for 40 years, I understand that completely. You know, with less than truckload freight and those kinds of things, you pay much higher rates. So what, when he and I were talking, uh, I said, well, what we'll do next year in the proposal is we will put something in there where you can include a price for a less than a, less than a full load, what those, what that rate would be. And then if, if, you know, we do require a partial load, uh, whatever your, your invoice then would reflect that, that rate per gallon. So if we can include some wording.
Some kind of a clause to that effect?
Yeah.
Maybe just a line item, you know, because it's per gallon and, or mile, yeah.
Yeah, and probably in the, uh, in the invitation to bid, and then also on the, uh, the proposal itself, where you have, you know, the blank rate per gallon, next to that, maybe put, you know, partial load and above that, you know, full loads or something, something like that.
Okay, we can do that. Better, that, that'll tackle that now that you had a history with it.
Yeah, and he was, he, he may, he may even include that in his bid when he puts it in, I don't know. But I said we would try and change the, the request for that, so it'd be indicated in there for everybody that bids on it.
Okay.
Everybody, i.e. one person, right?
Yeah, but my understanding is we've, if you go back five, eight years, we maybe have had two bids, maybe.
Yeah, I don't remember.
So. We, we do send, I will say, we have sent it out to about six or seven different potential pitters, but do not get, either do not, yeah, well, we do not get responses, so.
Okay, then we have a slew of row invoices.
Yes, uh, and, and let me say, Rick Freeman will be on the meeting, and he will walk through each of them. And I was asked by, uh, Josh, will we take a separate roll call for each? Unfortunately, yes. Because of the fact that we're using so much different grant money, and we will almost certainly have another single audit, I'm gonna need to have these invoices approved one at a time, um, by separate motions. I would love to group them, but we really can't.
Well, I counted nine. Is that what?
It, yeah, it's just, uh, I, I feel bad, but again, if we don't do that, when we get to audit time, it'll be a disaster of trying to sort through. So this kinda helps all of us make sure, what we're trying to do is track the grants and each project separately, because especially with single audits, uh, they'll, they'll zoom in on those problems. And we'll have a, we'll have a murky time trying to sort out, uh, everything, so.
My suggestion would be then, I guess, um, if, if Rick's gonna be on the call, um, we take each invoice, and he takes, like, for instance, the first one is invoice number 0096735, date of February 8th. He goes over it quickly, and then we make a motion to pay and support and go on, and then go to the next one.
Yeah.
Um, so that everybody understands what we're approving on each one. You guys, are you good with that, everybody?
Yeah, that sounds good. Uh, I have, I, I have two items, uh, Mitch, that maybe you can contact Rick ahead of time, uh, so that maybe he can correct it before the meeting. Uh, the first one is on page 38 of the packet. Uh, this is for invoice 096735. It has on here professional services through January 31st of 2020. I'm sure that's supposed to be 2021.
Yeah. Okay.
And then on page 49, uh, the invoice 97406. In their, in their billing backup, uh, that they do for all these invoices, at the bottom, it is, has total invoice for 96452, which is the wrong invoice number.
Okay.
Do you see what I'm talking about there?
Yes.
974, I'm sorry, that was 97406?
Yes, and then.
Oh, and then the backup, right, it's, it references 64.
Another.
Yeah, 52.
Right.
Gotcha.
Yeah. Okay.
Mitch, I had a question too, that you might wanna ask him too, that, so, because I know we got a lot on Monday night. Is, um, on page 37, it's where it talks about the project, all it says is as-needed services. And then there's a bill each month for as-needed services. Can he elaborate on that?
It's on page 37, I wanna get to it.
Yeah, on the, on the backup, on the next, the next page, it has, that's for, uh, the Eagle Grant Writing, Michigan Initiative, Consumers Energy Grants. I think that's what.
So anything, so as-needed to do with those grants?
I, I would, I would guess that's what that's supposed to be, but that's also on the page, it, it says through January 31st of 2020, so.
Yeah.
Right.
That was a while ago. That was pre-COVID, for God's sakes.
Yes.
Okay.
Or to.
Okay. Yep, we can sort.
Okay, um, then we have the IT proposal from IT, right?
Yes, um, I, I hate to say, okay, so I, I, the attorney has looked at it, and he's just like, materially, it's, it's, it's good. But he says, if you're asking me about technical pieces, and I said, well, we have two, at least two members of the board that should be able to delve into and, and determine whether the technical aspects of that contract are what was desired. So, uh, I hate to say, we'll be leaning on Jeremy and Tim, uh, to make sure that that contract has its all the, the Ts crossed and Is dotted, so on that piece.
And my only comment at this point is that it still does not contain an hourly rate for work after hours or weekends in case there was something of, uh, urgent nature requested or required. And, um, there isn't anything in here covering service level agreements, meaning, uh, a minimum service level that we can expect an exchange for this quadruple rate that we'll be paying.
Is this something, uh, Tim, is this something that we are gonna have to just kind of write ourselves? Because they don't seem to be willing to put it in there. So is it something that we should write ourselves, have the attorney look at it and see if they'll add the, put it as an addendum to the contract?
I don't know. I thought the last time, some months ago, that we were going to talk about this, but I haven't seen a, a work session come up on this topic. So I'm again seeing this contract presented to us, and I don't know how it, how it manifests itself, suddenly be here again.
I remember, I remember talking to him, so.
Yeah, this, this came out of that, I think, the discussion with, he was having with him.
Right, and if, yeah, right, so we, we sat down with him, we had, we had a good conversation, I thought, you know, we went through some things that, uh, that we, and I thought that we were pretty specific about adding some kind of service level agreement to the contract for our approval. And here we have another contract, and it's still not in there.
And it's an hourly rate as well.
So again, I guess, is this, I mean, are we gonna keep going back and forth with them and, and keep requesting it? Or should we just say, hey, let's draw it up, have our attorney look it over, and make it say what we want, and then add it to the contract?
I'm, I think, two of you could do it.
An hourly rate could be added to section two, because the service is not covered. Because ultimately, what that cover, what, uh, section is trying to cover is stuff that's not part of the contract, which means, um, after-hours or weekend, uh, events where we're saying, hey, you can't wait until Monday. But at the same time, we also don't see here anything about whether or not an emergency that could, it could involve that for, what, what do they call it? I can be a moment here. Uh, sorry, section, yeah, for, let's say, repair or maintenance under section one. So repair or maintenance, uh, could reasonably, uh, require, if it were an outage, time spent after the end of day. And is that gonna be covered, or is that something we would have to pay extra for? Because we might have the option to demand it.
I believe in, if I remember correctly, in that conversation we had with them, they alluded to that they would not charge extra for that time if it was within that chunk of, of, uh, of devices that they were here to repair. But I don't see it reflect, I don't see that statement reflected one way or the other in the contract either, so.
Yeah, that's, so those are my concerns.
And the only, the only question I had on this was number one, the last sentence where it says, this includes the existing computers and related network equipment within the client's offices. How does, does that cover our, the board members' laptops, which aren't in the offices?
Good question.
No, it does. It does. Our, our laptops have been covered by IT right from the beginning. It also includes, um, DPW, which has, you know, which is clearly not within the township hall. Uh, it also includes Old Orchard Park.
Okay, so, so under that, what that would mean is that if we have a problem with our computer, we have to bring it to Township Hall, and then they, I mean, that's what we've done, and, but it's, they're not typically located in Township Hall, was my point.
No, that's correct. That's correct. That's right. But they are owned by the township, and then we, I've even had a, a call with IT right directly from my own home on the laptop. It's not but a problem. It's under the auspices of the agreement.
Okay, all right.
They can remote log, uh, even from outside of, of, of the physical boundaries of our township hall, so.
Yeah.
So what do you guys wanna do? Do we want to, um, draft something and, um, ship it over to them?
Do you wanna get to, yeah, do you wanna get together, and maybe what we'll do is, um, just put up a couple of, I think, I've talked, counted three, three aspects here. We can do something and give it back to Mitch.
I think we should. I don't know if.
Talk after the meeting.
Okay.
Okay, well, and if we're not, yeah. Yeah.
Counterback to you, Mitch, is with, with something back from us. So I think this means that this should be, uh, not voted on on Monday, because I don't think you're gonna get anything.
Do you wanna post? Likely, likely we'll postpone it?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yes, just expect.
Like you said, the, the attorney, you know, he said, I, I'm checking out about the technical aspects. And I said, well, I have the expertise on, on, on the staff, on the board itself. So I said, you don't worry about the technical parts, just worry about legal crap.
Speaking of the, uh, the legal crap, which we all love so much, is, uh, is this, when, when, uh, Tim and I are finished writing up the, uh, the chunks that we'd like to see in there, um, do, are we gonna be able to submit those to the attorney for review? And will he review them without running it through, uh, the supervisor superintendent's office? Are we gonna have any issues there?
We could do that. No, we could do that. Now, I'll, I'll prep him that, hey, this is coming, uh, and then say, you know, when you receive it, if you could turn it around, that way we have that aspect, maybe we'll have it by Monday, but whenever you have it, then we'll be ready. And, but if you did, then we, we might be able to turn that, because it doesn't, you're talking about three different kind of, I'll call it provision sections that you're gonna address.
And pending on the, you know, pending the meeting between, uh, Tim and I, we know, we may expand on some of these other sections to be more specific in, in certain areas, to not include, you know, not just related networking equipment within the client's offices, but actually spell it out, that, you know, any laptops that the board members, uh, you know, and, and maybe, maybe we'll go into detail. I'm gonna kind of follow Tim's lead on that, because he is the contract master, so. Nod and smile, man, nod and smile. Hey.
Are we ready to go on then to Row IBT Design and Construction Proposal? Anything on that?
That's pretty straightforward too, so.
So it's, I mean, it's a total of $260,000 that we'd be paying them? Is that what I'm reading?
Well, this is, uh, we've got most of them covered in grant.
Right, I understand, but it's a $260,000 contract with them?
That is correct.
Okay.
How much is most of it, when you say most of it's covered by grants?
We're, we're anticipating, unless, unless they're way off on their design and administration, we're expecting all of this to be covered.
Fantastic.
So.
Okay, um, then the next is legal RFP responses.
Well, I, for one, I'm not willing to, uh, ready to go forward with this yet. I've, I've had some less and stellar communication with White and Wojo on a number of items. I'll go into detail on Monday, and I'm a little, I'm actually extremely disappointed with the Township Administration and not getting the RFP out on time, um, when we voted on it back in January, February, or January, and also extending the date without a board approval. So I'm probably gonna be, we'll be having that discussion on Monday night, and, um, my opinion is gonna be postponing this and possibly putting the RFP out again.
I'm actually surprised that we got so few, uh, so few respondents with so many, sure that there's more than two law firms in the state that would be interested in something like this. Did, uh, where was this all, where was the, the RFP posted in the first place? I mean, was it posted on the MTA site, or any of those, any of those big township websites?
MTA and and our site.
Mm-hmm.
So. But I, I know the last time it went out, uh, the Township only received two responses the last time they went out.
Was it, how long ago was that? Yeah.
I don't know, four or six years ago, when, uh, the last time Robert, uh, there was a, a rebid, and it was him and one other, uh, firm. And I think that firm was a localized firm as well.
Yeah, I think it was Vicky Hopcroft, actually.
Oh, okay. All right.
Okay, so the thought process, I just, I mean. Everybody else thinking that will extend the bid process a little bit longer or what? Is that gonna be the? To see what else is out there? I'm fine with that. Okay, alright. Well, I guess we'll talk more Monday. Then the next is the oni listing agreement with Friedman. Has this been sent to the attorney by any chance, this, this one?
Yes.
Okay, so there was none of the clauses in here that they didn't like in the other one?
They're fine with it.
Okay.
The question, the question really comes down to, are you? Interested in this? Auction. Process. I mean, that, that will have a big effect. How we're gonna. Divest this building.
I didn't get to hear.
Sounded pretty interesting. You were late, Jeremy.
Yeah, yeah, it's really, really a bummer because it's really, you have to watch the, the recording, Jeremy. It was very interesting. I liked it very much.
I caught the second half of it when they were talking about, and I, and I like the fact that he was saying that if it gets to, you know, if it gets to a certain dollar amount. That is above the. You know, where the reserve is met, or maybe, maybe, maybe I'm confused on that, but he, we had the ability to say, no, we're not gonna take that deal.
Right, right. I like that.
Oh, yeah, really? Because that way, if we do put, you know, if they start the bidding at 250,000 and, and the only, and we get one bid, well, we could say, wow. We're gonna pass. Or maybe not. Maybe we say, huh, that's fantastic. Get rid of it. We'll see.
Right. Well, and I, I guess that's what I thought was interesting because there's two points. They have a, they have, we have our reserve amount. But then they have the minimum bid starting at a third of whatever that reserve amount is. So, I mean, if. If we get to the point where, you know, they, you know, have advertised this and it really looks like maybe, you know, they were off the mark on the $900,000. And it's more like a $400,000 amount. I mean, we could actually accept that offer. You know, we have time to then. Because you have that 15 day window. When it's done, we can sit down and talk and see. You know, maybe the, I mean, and I don't think it's gonna go that way, but at least then, you know, we could look at it and say, well, you know, this is kind of what the market has said it, it will bear. Let's just go. But, you know, it gives us that opportunity. So that's kind of nice. But. And I can't really up front all those costs without, you know, the chance of losing out. I mean, an environmental and all that is quite a bit of money. But.
Well, I think the interesting part was when he explained, because I wasn't sure, you know, what are. We would be able to do. And, and what I understood and, and maybe, maybe I misunderstood, but if we, if we get bids up to our. Goal at, at 900,000 or above. Then we are sort of locked into a sale at that point. If we don't meet that, then we're not necessarily locked into a sale. Now, I don't, I don't, I don't see why, you know, if, if we, if we get nine, we get $900,000 out of this. I think everybody will be just happy as, as can be. My concern is that you don't, you know, you don't get anywhere near that. That amount. I have no idea the work they'll put into this. To, to get, you know, bidders for this project. But. My concern was, you know, if you start out at 250 or 300 and you get the bidding up to. 350 and that's as far as it goes. You know, I guess the board then would have to make a decision. Well, you know, do we want to just go ahead and sell it for that? Or we decline that offer and, and do something else or? You know, what do we do? And I think we have the ability, based on what he said, we have the ability to do that if we don't meet the.
Yes.
Minimum.
The minimum, yes.
For sure.
So I like it. I, I think it's a.
Seems like a win-win.
Creative way to. To get people fired up. I, I've been in auctions myself and I paid way more for something than I should have. So. Of course, it was always, always alcohol involved. So that has something to do with it too.
Excellent, excellent.
Yeah, no, it sounds kind of cool. Um. Alright, there is one, so. Because there is still on this contract with Friedman, there's still an indemnification line and I didn't think we could do that. So. Number 17. I guess when I just want to make sure on that. But I guess they reviewed it and said, okay, we're good. Any other questions on that on a listing agreement?
Why do you think that the indemn, or what's your, what's your question about that indemnification clause?
We generally can't, we can't indemnify is my, you know, we were always preached that, that we as a government entity can't indemnify anybody. So.
Interesting. Well, I guess we should probably ask the attorney about that specifically on Monday, yeah? Because I mean, if we're not allowed to do it, then quite frankly, it shouldn't be in there, should it?
Right. We always asked to be indemnified, but we can't indemnify anybody else. As well, I was already, yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think you're right on that. And I think that's what the attorney always said in the past.
Right. So I, I mean, and maybe that was just a rob thing. I don't know. I mean, but I, I thought that that was the case that as a government entity, we cannot. Sometimes there can be a mutual indemnification, I think, on certain other, with certain other government entities or something. I can't remember what the loophole was. But anyways.
And I believe you're absolutely correct on that.
Okay. Alright, so then the next thing is relocation of the Economic Development Director, which I believe Mr. Dickerson is on the phone. Still, or on the line. I just am gonna unmute him if he has any.
I'm still here.
Yeah, well, and yeah, and you're on the. Where, where's that? Okay, yeah, the last one is real estate. Okay. So, anything on this?
Oh, it's, I think there's on there by Mitch's doing. I'll, I'll need a home here soon, sooner rather than later. And as I told you, Anne, I, I personally am flexible where, where the board thinks I should be. So.
Great. Well, I mean, obviously, yeah, obviously being downtown is the, you know, is an ideal location. It's just, you know, there's not a ton of space in the building. Especially with COVID and trying to keep everybody a little bit separate, you know? But I did show Todd a couple of spaces in, or one space specifically in on a medical, which I understand we're selling. But that, you know, in theory is a few months away. But it's right as you come in. Off the east entrance and it's really close to the front doors. So it would, you know, it's a night, I mean, Todd saw it. It's a, it's a nice space, actually. So.
I'd hate to move him two or three times in a row. And there's no, there's no offices open at the township hall right now?
Well, I think he was originally in this space that I've kind of parked in, but that doesn't necessarily mean I have to be here either. Originally, but I'm here a lot, so I do need a space.
Right.
We do have room in the treasures office. If we reconfigured space, we could either park Anne. In here or Todd in here, like move Jane over to the other side of the room and then create a space, you know, where they're not like. Having to deal with the counter or anything like that, that they'd be closer to the window. I mean, there's always that option.
Would that work for you, Anne, to have a desk in the treasures office instead?
Yeah, I just, I mean, I don't know if I want Anne in here, but.
Personally, I'd like to have Todd in that building. So everybody's there.
Right, right.
Yeah.
I mean, you know, in the past, the zoning and. Code enforcement were in the same office. I mean, you know.
Yeah, that didn't work out so well though, especially given as busy as that office has, has become in the last year or two.
Right. And, but it's also tricky too, depending on, I mean, if Todd, you know, Todd or I, depending on which one in the treasurer's office. There's people in and out of there a ton at, you know, at times paying bills, doing whatever. And if you're on a phone call, you know, on stuff, it's kind of hard. But we can make it work. So.
I think, I think, I might, I think it might be better for Todd to be in the office you're in right now so that when he has, you know. People in, he can have a private space to, you know, with developers and builders and that kind of thing. As opposed to in the, in the treasurer's office. Typically, typically the, you know, the supervisor position is a part-time position. So. You know, you're not necessarily have to be there all day, every day.
Yeah, and summer's coming. You're gonna be out selling houses like crazy. So I'm excited for you.
Anne's here a lot.
I know. Yeah, she likes it down there.
I'm happy to go to the fire barn if that makes life easy.
No, no, Todd, that's totally, that's totally not. Yeah.
Oh, we could, you know what? We could build, put, put a ladder in there and we can have them climb up on top of those two offices that are in that back corner. That'd be perfect.
Right. Well, I guess, you know, and the, the question is, I mean, and this is not meant. Is any negative whatsoever, but I know you work from home a lot to, you know, I mean, like, are you gonna be in town? Like moving forward? Are you gonna be in town more, you know, kind of a deal? With, I mean, COVID, you know, I, I don't know what's happening there, I guess. So.
I mean, COVID is, is a driving factor.
Right.
And when the, the state was shut down, like. If I could be in here in Ohio and live a more normal life after five o'clock, then I'm gonna, I'm gonna take that choice. So if COVID and the state can. Open more up and now that the weather is breaking, now there's a great chance I'll be up in, in town local a lot more.
Right. I guess what my point is, is that we could kind of share space or whatever. We'll figure it out. But definitely we'll, we'll. Get it reconfigured so that your stuff comes back to this office where you work. So I think there's stuff in the drawer still. So it could just be maybe a shared space for files anyways, because some of the same files you access, I access. So. And then I can just be in another location. Jeremy got this handy dandy little laptop for me that I can kind of move around easily. So.
Is it working for you?
I actually haven't taken it out of the docking station. That was a little bit of a lie. But, yeah, okay. Alright, well, what about all the desks and stuff that are over there, Todd, in your other office? Like over at the artist's house?
Yeah, I would, I would say if, I mean, if we don't need them. In the actual municipal building for any reason, you know, an extra body, let's say, I'm just. Throw them wherever out at oni, I guess, for the time being.
Right, we just gotta fi- figure out what you need space. Yeah, okay, well, we'll just work it out. Sounds good.
I mean, let's not, and let's not forget that there's actually two people in the Economic Improvement Office.
Oh, yeah, Ryan Toots, oh, what?
It's also September 8th, but, you know, and I don't want to get us too, too, I don't want to get off. The, off the agenda subject and then we kind of breeze through my, my EIC update. And part of that. Is to inform you that Ryan has issued his resignation. So that's a little spoiler alert for Monday.
Oh.
And I'll, and I can, I can get into that more on Monday and what I plan to do to, to remedy that. I've got some strategies worked out with C DAM. So. But if, you know, Ryan has been because of COVID, working a lot from home. Going forward though, this, the, if, if we backfill him, I could see that person, we would want more closely. You know, working more physically closer in the building.
You mean until that? Because that's just through August, right?
No, he's through September 8th.
September 8th, but I mean, just through September 8th. So he's gonna be gone before September 8th, you're saying? Okay, gotcha.
Last day is plus or minus May 17th.
So do we get a reimbursement from SEDOM for the month we had to pay?
Nope. Yeah, I, I convinced them to let me hire a backfill for those four months.
Okay, alright. And they will cover that cost?
Yep. Yeah, in fact, they'll, they'll cover the cost of having two people at the same time for some, for some training. You know, and we'll have, you know, we'll, they'll overlap Ryan and the new person. So.
Okay, cool.
Okay. So really, there's two. Okay. Well, I'm not here next week. So Todd, you're more than welcome to be in this space.
Okay.
I thought you weren't gonna be here today, Anne. Or no, that's just for Monday. I thought you were rolling out today. I thought you were gone.
Nice try, but no, I'm here today.
I was excited for you.
Yeah.
Taking a long vacation.
Yeah. Okay, so next on Planning and Zoning Services Proposal. And I'm sorry, Todd, I guess going back, I buzzed through the EIC director update because I just assumed we were gonna do that live on Monday.
Yeah, as, as long as you guys know the, or that the real estate process disposition is in that segment of your packet?
No, it's down on, under superintendent reports. So you're.
Alright, just so you guys know that that's there and the attorney has looked at it and.
So we actually, we're, we have one more thing to talk about and then we're gonna talk about that. So if you wanted to hang on for a minute?
I will.
Okay, but that's why I buzzed through the EIC things. I just thought, yeah. Okay, wasn't trying to be rude. So Planning and Zoning Services Proposal?
This is just a proposal from Row to provide playing and zoning. Professional services until we transition to a new person. And, and maybe, maybe some, depending on how we want to discuss it. Maybe some extended time with a new person as well to kind of give them some solid support, back support.
Have we already listed the position as available?
Yes, we have, we have one applicant and. We are attempting to lock down a time to interview that person.
And just.
Where's the job been posted? And can we see the posting?
Yes, it, it was, it's actually still live. It's still on MTA and still on Michigan Municipal League's website as well. And, and on our own website.
And I will say, just so the board knows, the, the person has applied, was a person that applied. Before and we were very, very high on her. I think we would have hired her. Hadn't had Eric not showed up, they had a, a, a little more qualifications and experience. But we, we were very impressed with the. The woman that applied originally and, and she is reapplying. So.
Is she local?
Yes.
Well, it sounds like we may have a solution.
That sounds good. Is she doing something now? I mean, she's working?
Yeah, yeah. He was, she was working for the county. I think still is. Yes.
Okay, well, that's good. Because with. Eric. Using vacation time before the end of his last day, it's not real helpful, to be honest, around here. This is, yeah, spring is the building season and we've got people left and right trying to get some projects going. So.
Where should we be directing people to for that? By the way, I have a couple people that handed me. Applications for land use and their cash. And I'm like, I, I, I'll take it, give you a receipt, but. Have a number, be able to post to it. And I don't know who to give it to.
One reported to me. And then we'll, we'll try to act upon those accordingly. Obviously, if the board were to approve this Monday night, then we'll. Turn this stuff over immediately to. Rose staff to start working on.
I was just, just out of curiosity, I was just wondering, I was very impressed when you read through the qualifications, these three people that they have listed here. Very, well, you know, obviously very qualified. I'm just. Curious if, if Row would have a proposal to provide a person. Full-time for us as a contract employee, kind of like our utility billing that we turned over to FNV. Where FNV actually has the employee and we just. I just wonder what that, what that cost might look like for something like that. Just, just out of curiosity.
I think it'd be good to ask, but I think it would blow our budget out of the water.
It could well be. It could well be.
Given their hourly fees on the proposal, I would have to agree.
Right.
Well, that's what I was, yeah, that's what I was wondering if, if, if that would still suffice if, if we contracted them. Someone to us for a. Full-time or. I, I mean, I think we need to have somebody in there at least for a couple of months to get. You know, to get a new person, whoever that might be, you know. Since like Anne said, you know, Eric's not gonna be of much value. To maybe spend one day with a person, not gonna do a lot of good, but. It would be difficult. So I think, you know, if we can have one of these people from Row in there for, you know, at least a, a month or two. I was just curious, you know, we managed to get the. The billing, utility billing clerk from FNV, just, of course, their qualifications are completely different. I understand.
Right. Well, they would, I mean, they posted it and that person applied, which happened to be a, you know, which is a local person, you know, that applied. So this would mean, you know, they would. Either have to have one of their staff move here or post it, you know, themselves for a quality. Yeah, but.
They might be, I mean, if we signed a contract with them to have that employee here all the time, I would assume that those rates would probably go down a little bit.
Right. Wouldn't hurt to ask, I'm sure.
Yeah, just. Yeah, just, I was just curious on that. Certainly be a good, uh, somebody that's already trained, has all the certification, everything they need, so.
Right, so, yeah, I know I, I talked to Mitch briefly about this earlier, that, I mean, if the board approves this Monday, then um, I, what I would like is that we have emails forwarded and phone calls forwarded right away so that, um, we're not having just, again, citizens leaving messages that are not being unanswered, that are being unanswered, because we're going to set up some serious frustration, um, because there's some people that actually have been trying for three weeks now to pull a permit, so it, it's not just a brand new permit, so they've been struggling.
Yeah, and we're coming into our busy, our busy season for that type of thing right now, too, so.
Yep.
I read the resumes of the people that they had in the packet for Row, but what's the hourly rate they're planning on charging us for part-time here interim?
Let me look.
That I didn't see.
It's in the packet.
That's just their hourly billing rates on page ninety-four, right? So we're and we're assuming that they're going to have someone doing this full-time and for a couple of months. I don't know if we're getting
There it is, yeah.
I don't know if we're getting a senior planner, a planner or a graduate planner, or which.
That would be nice.
Yeah, I vote for clerical.
Still, you're at a hundred dollars an hour, probably minimum, just saying.
Yeah.
Well, I wouldn't think we would need, I mean, professional engineer, professional surveyor, I mean, for the most part, we're dealing with site, you know, um.
I'm just looking at graduate planner, ninety-five dollars. I doubt it's going to be a clerical person, right?
Well, maybe we can see if they'll split up with us.
Question, do we technically, I mean, I know we need a person, but what about the county, the county building people? Can't they help us for a couple of months and help train the new person, especially if she's coming from the county? I mean, is that somebody that's leaving the county position to come here that would already have the expertise? Instead of paying somebody, you know, I mean, I know Row has the experience and maybe it'd be beneficial too, but it wouldn't be worth looking into building, the county building commissioner's office, just doing our, the permits and stuff like that for people for now.
Or in the past, we've, Nancy's, you know, done some assistance too, some gap stuff. Not saying that she likes to do it, I'm sure we'd have to compensate her, but she has stepped in the past.
I mean, that's an option. We may want to talk to Nancy, she's already there. I mean, just, you know, give everybody an idea, just if it was a clerical rate at a full-time job, you know, that's a hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars a year.
Right. Well, I mean, you know, I, I, I think, um.
And, and I like Row, don't get me wrong.
Yeah, oh, yeah, but we can't afford that, um, you know, we can't even afford, you know, really to try to do that for a couple of months if that was eight hours a day, forty hours a week, but, I mean, but really, if they're just answering, I'm assuming there's going to be some kind of a log situation going where they're going to log in a call, we're only going to be charged for the time that they, you know, if they get an email or they get an application. We're not, we're not paying somebody to sit at a desk where maybe some days you don't get any phone calls. You know, so it would just be a per, you know, per permit or per situation, right?
Right, I would rather compensate Nancy.
Yeah.
I think if we could move, if we could move forward and, and hire, uh, you know, somebody that has, has applied and get them in the office, um, at least somebody's there to answer the phones. And then if we get somebody from, from Row to come up, you know, two, three times a week for part of the day or something, I don't, you know, whatever, decide, uh, to help get that person started, then at least the office is covered and you're not having phone calls being unanswered and, and messages left and, because like I said, we're, we're, this is, this is the busy time when people are going to be looking for permits to do all sorts of things.
If we have one applicant and that person applied before, when are we planning on bringing in the interview? Because in the last meeting, I think it was you and I, Bill, with Mitch and Anne.
Oh, for the interview process? I don't remember.
But when are we planning on, on bringing the person in if she, i- if the person has applied?
We're attempting to bring her in next week.
Okay, I will not be available.
I don't know if I would be of assistance, but I'm, I could probably make it if you need some, I need an extra person there.
I'll be here next week, too.
And I, I can come in and, like I said, we, we interviewed her before, uh, and, uh, she was very impressive. I, I think she would do a good job for us, but, uh.
I like the idea of, uh, getting, you know, if we're going to hire somebody locally, I like the idea of getting it done. Is, you know, is provided that the, uh, application, uh, window is, you know, to run its course, if you will. That would be, uh, it would be beneficial to have some, you know, some of the pros from Row come up and help her make that transition. I, that's a great idea, Bill, I like that.
Yeah, yeah, I think that would, that would help a lot.
Right, like, yeah, short-term assistance isn't bad, but we, you know, we can't.
Absolutely, short-term.
Yeah, short.
Specifically.
Specifically. Well, and just streamlining some stuff, you know, I mean, I think we need to make sure that we're not over, um, reaching on our, uh, um, land use permits, um, and, and I guess talk with the building department, because I've heard some mixed signals from the the building department being a little frustrated with us, so I think we need to see, you know, what that we're following guidelines from them and not overstepping what we need to be doing, I guess, with the new person, so.
Oh, we should only be doing what's in the ordinance, so.
Right.
Right?
Yep. All right, so do we have some marching order? Yeah, I mean, everybody good on that? I mean, should we ask Nancy about, you know, some?
I wouldn't. Go ahead, Steve.
It couldn't hurt.
Yeah, I'd say, and if, uh, if Mitch has a few moments to shoot an email out after the, after the meeting, if he could ask Row for the, uh, the full-time employee, you know, not to say that we're going to go that route, but tha- that way we have all of our options open and we can see what's available out there for, for, uh, the most informed decision we can make.
I can ask that question.
I'd appreciate it.
Rick will be on the, on the meeting on Monday, so he, he probably could answer it at that time.
Is he the, uh, the management person that takes care of those types?
Well, I, I'm trying to make sure I, I run it through him since he is our main contact for Row, so. And he's the person I, I initially asked for the proposal from.
Okay.
All right, so next on is the real estate disposition documents. Todd, you're still there?
I am.
Okay.
Yeah, so, uh, you have what, what we're proposing as the, the process for, uh, real estate disposition. This has, that was looked at by the attorney, um, so the version you have has been blessed by our legal department. I just tried to walk through the different scenarios I could envision us, uh, taking property to market. Uh, try to add in a little bit of, you know, what we're, what we'll do with offers and what we consider an offer and what you need to have as part of, you know, either your LOI or your purchase agreement. So, and like I said, I've got legal blessing and it's all yours to discuss and, you know, make a decision on, on Monday.
When you spoke with the attorney, did he, uh, or she say specifically that this looks good type of situation? Or did they say that, I mean, did, did, was the question posed that should there be anything else in here that you know of from a legal standpoint? Not to say that the contract isn't, you know, isn't good enough the way it is, but is there something else like the indemnification that Anne pointed out earlier that got tossed into the Friedman thing that we need to review now? Is there something along those lines that, uh, that maybe we should put in there, that the attorney's thought of that we didn't?
Yeah, Alan and I spoke, um, ahead of time before, you know, he really went into and started looking at it. And I said, this is, this is why we want it, this is what we're going to use it for. And remember, this is our own process, this isn't an actual contract with anyone, this is just our internal our internal process.
Right.
Um, so again, I gave him some background as to why we were looking to have it, what, how we would use it and what you have in, you know, and I sent him my version of the story. And what you have in front of you is where he went in and added and subtracted language back and forth.
Okay.
Uh, to provide us sort of a, here, you should be all set.
I did notice in, in Mitch's, uh, write-up that he did have some concerns over our, uh, the requesting of a narrative in the offer and how we would handle, you know, if, if they didn't follow through on what they said they were going to do, which, you know, sadly happens. I'm, I'm not sure that we can prevent that, um, you know. Once, once you sell a property, it's pretty difficult to tell somebody what they can do with it. But on the other hand, i- in the past, what we've had, we've done is, is given, you know, lower, lower prices because the plans that the buyers have for the property are things that we wanted to see here in Osco, that so we're trying to, you know, move things along, especially for like housing and, um, if, if somebody wanted to, said they were going to build some housing, then, you know, we were willing to, you know, sell property for a little less than what we'd originally asked, but then when it doesn't get built in a timely manner, then what do you do? So.
So the contingencies that we've been discussing on and off for the past few meetings are, are on this, on the sale of a property for less than the advertised price are kind of in the, uh, in the mucky area, huh? Is that what I'm taking away from that?
Yeah, I mean, you mean when, when somebody's made an offer on a piece of property that hasn't met the advertised price?
Yeah, so if it's, if we're offering a hundred thousand, or if we say we want a hundred thousand dollars for this piece of property and somebody comes in and says, well, I know you need housing and I'll give you, uh, you know, I'll give you fifty thousand for it. And, you know, we were talking about saying, well, we would be able, we'd be willing to look at accepting a lower offer, but now you have to commit to timelines. So we're saying now that the attorneys have looked it over and said that, no, you can't really do that. You either accept the bid or you don't accept the bid. You can't ask for timelines and narratives. Is that, is that what I'm, is that what I'm hearing?
No, that wouldn't, that wouldn't be my interpretation. I think what Bill's trying to say is, okay, we, we agree, we're going to sell it to you for that's fifty thousand because you've committed to put, you know, fifty apartment buildings on this property. And then, you know, a year or two goes by and you don't have anything to show for it, you've missed your any kind of parameters we put on for deadlines, uh, now what do you do? Because they own the property.
Yeah, I think the only thing you could do in there is put a revert clause in. We did that when we sold, um, uh, some properties to Art Cruz, um, where we sold them for a lower amount and he, um, it's the ones, you know, on a long scale, actually, um, where he had to put X amount in, in a certain timeframe and then it had to be, um, it had to actually be inspected by, and then, you know, reviewed by, and then the engineer, uh, or an engineer and make sure that there was like occupancy, not occupancy, but, um, oh, what do you call that?
The certificate of occupancy?
Yeah, certificate of occup- occupancy was issued. And if that didn't all happen, then there was a reverter clause that we could take the property back, um, if he didn't meet those guidelines, so. But that gets tricky.
I was going to say, that sounds, oof.
Yeah, but it was in the deed, it was in there.
Another way to do it too is to split it up a little bit and, you know, they start a project, they have options on the rest, continue.
Right.
Continue renewing the options as they progress, so. There's a bunch of ways it could be done.
Yeah, but, and that's sure, certainly works if it's a larger tract of property.
Right.
But no, I thought it was a nice, I, I like the format, Todd.
Yep.
Well, yeah, I think it's, I think it's very good. I was just reading that, you know, in Mitch's letter, the, the concerns, and the only concern the attorney seemed to have was on this project narrative and
Right.
It wasn't a, it wasn't a, a killer to the whole thing, just, uh, just a question about, you know, how do you, how do you handle that?
Uh, Alan, I did talk about that. Originally, I just had in there, does your project meet the current zoning? And he was like, well, I don't really see why we can't ask for what they, what they plan to do and, and a, and a little uh, more informative project narrative. And I said, well, you know, you're, you're the attorney, you go research it and you tell me what you think. And when he came back to us, he was like, eh, I'm going to soften my position on that. And he kind of stuck with just the, he, he reworded that, that element about zoning. He wasn't willing to go too far down the road of telling me all about your project. So he kind of landed where I, I sort of started. And you get, and you guys obviously have the rest of the comments from him.
Right.
Yep.
Okay.
All right.
Well, thank you.
Yeah, hey, can I make one more comment that, again, probably in the EIC piece?
Sure.
So Tuesday, we have our EIC meeting at three o'clock, as we always do, uh, after your, after the township meeting of the month. I'm having two groups come in and talk about brownfield redevelopment and the MEDC and Eagle will do a thirty-minute, let's say a twenty to a thirty-minute presentation on brownfields and our brownfield authority and what a project looks like if you're going through those channels. And then I've got a, an engineering and consulting firm who's going to do another twenty to thirty-minute presentation on, this is what it looks like and this is what you could expect a consultant to do and help you through this brownfield process. I say, I would love it as many people want to show up and learn about this subject, but remember, we have to be sensitive. If too many board members show up, then I've got a, I just have a public meeting. Uh, it's not even an issue, we just have to plan for that, that's all. So, uh, you know, we've, I already have Bill and Josh as EIC, uh, committee member, so there's two already. Anne usually attends, but she'll be on vacation, so. Um, I'm at, is there anybody else who thinks they'll attend this at three o'clock and is interested? And if I have more than our, you know, if we hit four, then I, I just, Tammy and I just need to make sure it gets posted properly and we check the boxes we're supposed to.
I'm definitely interested in attending.
Yeah, I think you should just post it as a joint meeting.
Okay, okay.
If we do that, that means that one of us has to run it. If we do, if it becomes a joint meeting, then one of our, one of our board needs to run the meeting.
Why is one of our board?
One of the Osco to Township Trustee, uh, Board members has to run that, run a joint meeting. The highest board runs the meeting. So if it's a joint meeting, then, uh, the EIC would not run the meeting, the Osco to Town, Charter Township Board would run the meeting.
That's correct. Well, that, that doesn't hurt my feelings in any way.
No, I'm just, well, I just want to, I just want, if you're going to post it as a, as a meeting like that, then, and there's, and there's going to be a quorum present of the Osco to Ch- Township Trustees and, 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 uh, Board members. Then you, I just wanted you to plan accordingly so that you, if, you know, if there's going to be a quorum, then one of us needs to run the, run.
The whole meeting?
Yep.
Okay, well, of course, we record, we record these meetings as well, so I guess we could, you guys watch it post.
Yeah, well, I can, I can tell you I won't be attending. I'm zooming in Friday or Monday night, but not going to be zooming in, uh, Tuesday, sorry. Um, so, but if two board members are already there, it would be two more board members would make a forum.
Yep.
And it sounds like two board members either are planning on attending, so i- is there any way besides making it a, that's the only way to allow two more board members, correct?
I can listen or I can watch the, uh, recording, so if that makes it easy.
Same, I can do the same thing because I'll actually be at work. So Steve, if you want to be there, I can just zoom in later, that's fine.
So I guess, yeah, as, as long as we just know, um, that we're not going to have four people zo- you know, zoomed in, um, then we don't have to do a joint meeting.
It'll actually be the second day we're open to the public, so it might be better if Steve does, because then I'm, I'm probably going to be pretty busy at the counter.
Okay.
And if I, if I show up and, uh, there's going, and that's going to make a quorum, then I will, I will bow out and let Mr. Wooster Barth stay and I will, uh, watch the recording as well.
Okay, well, situation solved, yay.
Done.
Okay, so I'll work it out with Jeremy. It sounds like Jamie, Jamie's going to stay back, so.
Okay.
Okay, very good.
Thanks, guys.
That's my part. I'll, uh, I'll wish you guys a great weekend.
Thanks.
Thanks, Todd.
Okay, so next on is Art on the Beach request. Good to see it's coming back.
Yes.
We skipped the police contract?
Yeah.
Okay.
We did.
Where was that?
Right above it.
Oh, you know what? I must not have, I don't have the great agenda then, sorry. I must have downloaded my packet early. Because I, it's, it's not on my agenda, so. I have real estate, um, disposition documents and the next under other is Chamber, um, Art on the Beach.
That's what I have.
Yeah, that's what I have.
I'm looking at the one that I just pulled up off Documents on Demand on the website and there's a police contract right there to begin the process of contract negotiations with the police union. I'll let Mitch finish because it's, uh.
Yeah, and so to we could use
But it's not called out, is what it is. It's listed in the, um, in the actual verbiage on page twenty-six, but it's not in the, uh, the hyperlink on the left. That's all it is.
Okay. Uh, so for us, for us to begin the process of contract negotiations, um, it would be prudent to bring out a labor attorney for that purpose. It's my understanding that we, uh, severed our relationship at last, returning. And so I would like to, uh, and find, uh, a labor attorney that works.
And so I would like to, uh, and find, uh, a labor attorney that works in this region. And not necessarily bring them on at the very beginning, but have them, if you will, kind of on standby for, at the point where we will need them during the contract negotiations. And it's my anticipation that, again, not to bring them out at the start, but kind of bring them on at midpoint or near the end. So what I'd like to do is just bring back a proposal to the board for representation. Instead of going out for a huge RFP process, which I don't think will be real productive. There's even less, uh, labor attorneys in this region than, than our attorneys.
Well, I see the Woja comment, but we had Mr. Freel send an RFP or respond to it. So why don't we ask Mr. Freel on where he stands with labor law?
We could do that.
Um, okay. So I'm, sorry. This, this needs to be added. I mean, if we're going to talk about it, it needs to be on the agenda, correct? Cause I don't, unless, I mean, I see it in Mitch's report, right? It's in Mitch's report, but it's not on the agenda. So in order to talk about it, we need to have it on the agenda.
Correct.
So that needs to be number twelve.
It's, it's on the agenda under Mitch's report, superintendent report. The, the fact that it's missing a hyperlink on the left is actually not a, a plaintiff, whether it's on the agenda or not.
It's not on the agenda. It's not on the printed agenda. It's not number twelve.
Yeah.
So it needs to be on there. Otherwise it's not, yeah, I don't, I guess unless I have
Oh, yeah. Nope. I'm checking what you're saying. I got it. Yeah, yeah. Thanks very much. I appreciate it.
We just need to make an amended agenda for Monday.
Right. Yep.
Correct.
Yeah, as a number twelve, um, police contract, I guess, or whatever you want to call it. Police contract, labor attorney, what do we want to call it?
It's actually called, uh, on the, in the page twenty six, police contract.
Right.
It is not on the one posted on the door either.
Right.
Since we're, uh, since we're looking at that on the, uh, there's also the, uh, art on the beach is there, blue ribbon events date change and the two twenty seven are those list, oh, those are listed for down under other. I see him. Yeah. Okay.
That's why I jumped to the chamber one.
For sure.
Okay. All right.
Are we?
So we good on that? So we just need to amend the agenda for that, right?
Yep.
Okay. Great. Um, I guess
Could be an agenda addition on Monday night.
Right. Well, I guess, I mean, are we confident that the IT proposal or the IT right proposal? We're not going to be able to address. So we put in theory, amend the agenda, removing IT right, or we're not confident?
No, we're, we're not confident yet. We left it as a conditional, Mitch can, uh, cover that.
Remove it. Okay. Gotcha. Yeah. All right. I was just thinking we could remove it and add in police contract, but.
We may be with, with, if Mitch reaches out to IT right to, uh, talk to him about that, we may be witnesses of a miracle. And there may be a brand new contract for a review with all the things that we're asking for it. Who knows?
Okay, Pollyanna. Thank you.
Hey, that's an, the glad game. You go, girl.
Okay. All right. So we're good on the police contract. We just have to get it, uh, added on the agenda. Okay. So now the chamber of art, uh, not chamber of art. Yeah, chamber of commerce, art on the beach.
They're doing that out, uh, at, at the actual beach park and the property behind it. That's where they do the art on the beach and then.
Um, they do it in the block between Michigan and, um, they moved it there. Part of it, the vendors are usually between River Road and Michigan, and then actually the, uh, the art vendors. And then the food vendors are usually, which I'm not sure. I guess I didn't read it real close. If food vendors are normally on the basketball, um, on the concrete there, along with, um, uh, Rotary does the pancake breakfast, but I don't know if they'll be doing any of that. Or not. Depending on what's going on with COVID, I would assume.
It says we have contracts pending for food vendors. They will not exceed five separate vendors. That's on item six on page one ten.
Gotcha. All right. Looks pretty straightforward. Bathrooms are open by that time anyways, so should be good.
Looks good to me.
All right.
Yeah.
Like I said, good to see it back again. Um, blue ribbon, um, events change.
Yeah, this is, um, this is a switch, this is a switch and we, I'd say double, triple check that we've, uh, not double booked the property for that date. So this is the date she is now, she had requested a different date, uh, initially, but then she's, uh, made a, a second change on date. So this would be a confirmation of that.
So she decided to change the date instead of have all the people that are going to go to Rock Fest walk by their booths?
Yes, after, uh, some town sanctions and some contemplation, she decided to, uh, go with the option of changing the date.
All right. Are we going to give her any, uh, compensation in any way for her, uh, trouble in this situation?
We, we will waive the fee for that, uh, for that date only. She will still pay the fee, uh, the other two dates.
We need to make sure.
Mitch, can you email the board members, uh, that information from her? Cause it's not included in the packet here that I could find. Do that.
And we need to make sure on the other events that she pays in advance, not the day of.
Right.
Just like any other, um, uh, rental that happens. We are not, you know, if, um, if it's not paid in advance, I mean, a four, you know, obviously nonprofits don't, um, generally pay. Um, we waive those fees, uh, depending on the use. But I mean, if somebody rents Warrior Pavilion, somebody rents anything, they have to pay, you know, their security deposit and the rental fee before they're allowed to be, to have keys um, to get in the building. So same thing with the field. We need to have proof of insurance that the township's named as an additional insured and, um, payment.
Did we ever settle on anything with, uh, I'm sorry to jump, jump topics, but did we ever settle on anything about the electrical usage and all that stuff? Did we look at any of the rates for the, for the field usage?
He states in her narratives that, that she does not use the electric.
Fair enough. I was just, I was wondering.
Short answer, no, I didn't talk to Bill at all, um, to ask about that. I'm not sure if Mitch said, but. And our biggest user, Schmidt amusement for Paul Bunyan Festival, Schmidt amusement sadly enough is out of business. So, um, I'm guessing Paul Bunyan's not going to be happening because there's no carnival. So.
Well, they're not out of business?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, really sad.
They probably just couldn't make it last year with everything being closed, you know, that's a rough spot.
Yeah.
Maybe they'll be able to, uh, open back up in the future.
Yeah, it's really unfortunate.
Yep, very sad.
Well, I'm sure the chamber is probably out looking for, uh, an alternative. I know that they're not the only carnival in the world, but it's probably going to be real tough to get them now because
Yeah, it was hard to get them on a date and stuff. So, yeah, and I, I'm assuming if they're struggling, others are obviously, um, so who knows?
Yeah.
It's going to have long-term ramifications for sure. But, okay. So you're going to email that stuff out Mitch if you didn't already?
Yeah.
Great. And then, so the next on is two twenty seven River Road closing date.
Yeah, we will need, uh, Monday and we're going to prepare it. It would be, um, we're going to need a motion to appropriate, and this is with the closing cost, one hundred and forty-six thousand, one eighty-two fifty-eight uh, to do, um, appropriate that to align item one oh one dash two five zero dash nine seven one dash zero zero zero. And that will enable us to write the check for the closing. That's the following day.
Yeah. So that would normally be added to the agenda here because of specificity. So we could actually give you that motion. So, um, yeah.
What can we include? Well, it's on there. Well, right. If we have two twenty-seven River Road property purchase closing, I mean, you could just incorporate in there as part of it. Budget or a budget appropriation, can't we?
It, well, if you could just email all the board members, you know, we've, in the past, we've had to postpone so many things because items weren't in the packet.
Right.
But if, if they're emailed to all of us ahead of time, then we have the opportunity to look at them. They don't necessarily have to be in the packet because there's been times in the past where, you know, you just can't get everything in the packet, uh, by the time the packets, uh, put up, you know, to be looked at. And so we, uh, the superintendent or supervisor, whoever might email the information, like a copy of a contract or something on Monday. So that to all the board members, so we have an opportunity to look at it, then we, that way we don't have to postpone it simply because it isn't in the packet. As long as we have it to look at ahead of time, uh, you know, we can, we can act on, on the item that's, that's on the agenda. So again, if, if we can just email that to all the board members, so we can look at it between now and Monday or during the day Monday, it, it should be good.
And then, well, Tammy can still upload it though into the packet itself so that the public has it. Right.
Well, that's, that, that, I mean, that's true. She can do that, but it's, it's, it's not required under the Open Meetings Act that all that be included in the packet. We are only required to post the agenda. So, you know, here, last couple of months, we've had to, we've had to postpone a lot of items, uh, simply because things weren't in the packet. Whereas if they had been emailed to us where we can look at them, uh, we could have gone ahead and acted on that. That's, I, I just hate to, you know, postpone any more things than we have to. That's
Yeah, we definitely can't do that. So, um, in order, when you indicate, um, what you want emailed, uh, you want like the closing documents or just the information about the, um, appropriation for the GL for the amount to?
Whatever information we, we will need to make a decision on voting on it. And, and, and in this case, that is, you know, the, um, the appropriation for the amount of money and where it's, where it's going to go and how that is all going to transpire from what fund, where. And then, you know, that's, that's all we need, I think.
Okay. Sounds good.
If there's other documentation that you have in reference to it though, you might as well just send it all that way that, you know, there's no, no gaps in information and we all have the exact same info.
I don't know if we've received a closing packet or not from, um, landmark.
We have.
So we could just share that.
That'll have the parcel number and then we just need the GL code.
Yep. Yep. So that'll have the parcel number, the amount that we're going to need, and then we just need our rate.
Yep.
Great. Sounds good. Next is water, uh, bad debt write-off.
Yeah, that's sadly, that's pretty standard. We have to do that time to time.
Good question.
Um, I guess I just, I, I don't think this is, I, I just want to point out, our utility billing person, I mean, she really does a good job, um, providing information on anything. Um, so I don't know. Um, anytime she's sent emails to Mitch or I or the board, she provides a thorough background of stuff and summarizes and even references the ordinance and, you know, and, and, and indicates, you know, this is what the ordinance says. I need confirmation. I mean, she really does a phenomenal job. Um, so I want to point that out and I can tell you what, she's been one of the only people that has been in this building five days a week since COVID started. So when, and the, when the township was gone, F and V had her here. So she was not allowed to work from home. So I just want to make sure that the board is aware of that. Um, and when there's snow days, um, and the township doesn't come in, she still comes in, um, because F and V makes her come in. So. Oh, whatever. You are not a hourly employee. I come in too. But, but, but I'm just saying, you know, I mean, you know, she, she really is a good resource. So, um, and provides a good job. Um, but.
So we actually can write off, uh, water debt. I thought this was one of those things where if somebody didn't pay it, that it was added as a lien to the property or something along.
Well, because it was a state tax sales in issue. So.
Yeah, you can't do that anymore.
Oh, really? So that's just, this one of those things, huh?
That's why we changed the policy where the, uh, that has to be signed up by the owner of the property and not the renter.
Not the renter. It was a nightmare all in itself, but
Okay.
That's another discussion. We won't talk about that now.
Yeah.
Fair enough.
Jeremy, in some instances, it does get passed on to the owner of the property. In some instances, it does have to be written off.
Okay. So that's pretty straightforward that.
Yeah. Yep. Um, next is the, oh, sorry.
Yeah, I have a question about the resignation then. So I, I see the very, um, cheerful and cooperative resignation letter, which I think we've seen before. So I think we've seen this somewhere. Maybe it was the email and now it's from the board.
Yeah, Mitch emailed that out.
So my question is that, you know, it's, it's just a question of like, okay, so why is there a discrepancy between the cheerfulness and cooperation, cooperative, properness of this letter versus the point that was made earlier? It says that, um, all this vacation time is taken, being taken up to the last day of his employment. Did something happen that's because of sour or what, what occurred?
And I don't know. My, he, he is, plan is to be here the last, his last official day. And I'm going to conduct a exit interview with him about that and other things.
He's spoken of grievances to, uh, to myself a couple of times. But, uh, when I caught him out, uh, in front of Glenn's the other day, he was basically just saying that he had another job offer, which he notates here and he was, uh, excited to move on to bigger and better opportunities, I guess. So.
Well, here's my reason for asking the question. Vacation time is normally written as a check for anything left on account, you know, when a person terminates. So, um, I realize that maybe the terminate, the, uh, the new job starts immediately right after the end of this, uh, this position. But it just strikes me as something's different, you know, something changed. This is very cheerful. And, uh, whereas somebody who is really trying to be cooperative and, and transition a position, um, taking all your vacation time up to the last minute is not uh, in alignment with that objective. So I'm just calling something out and saying, you know, if somebody doesn't know what's going on with that, um, and has approved that vacation time, um, then I, I'm sitting here saying that's not in the best interest of the township.
Is his vacation time approved?
Yes. And he took personal as well.
So, so you approved that Mitch?
I did.
All right. Thanks very much. Excellent. We're already at nearly two hours, guys. I just want to point that out.
Yep. Okay. Um, next is, uh, the road and sidewalk advisory committee. Um, just, I had emailed everybody out. Um, I emailed the board out that, um, we do need a, um, there used to be a road and sidewalk advisory committee. All three of those members are no longer board members. So, um, I had actually talked to Jim Byer briefly about that committee. Um, and I have, um, actually been approached by two people, uh, or not one person, Norma Smith, um, who was part of the project that never happened with the other committee, um, that still wants it to happen. So, um, anyways, we need to reinstate that committee. I emailed everybody out and I got interest back from Jeremy and, um, Steve saying that they wanted, not Jeremy, sorry, strike that Jeremy. Um, Josh and Steve, um, they wanted to be on the committee. So it would be my intent to, the three of us, along with obviously Mitch, um, form that committee. If the board is good with that.
That was good to me.
All right.
Well, I guess we're running out of time, so never mind.
Okay. Next on is paternity maternity leave.
That's going to get taken off. I've found, uh, some provisions in our employee handbook, uh, under FMLA that'll cover that. So.
Okay.
I don't need to ask a question.
Okay. So we can amend that, um, we'll amend the, uh, agenda and we'll remove that and we'll add that police contract to number twelve under your report.
Yeah.
Okay. Um, and then eight, we have a lot split.
I just have a question. I see it's on Cedar Lake Road. Is this across from Lakewood Shores? Golf, I mean, the pro shop there or the clubhouse?
Uh, let me look.
You have to be honest. I'm not familiar with the area and the map on page one eighteen really doesn't help me much.
Yeah, it doesn't. No.
I thought it had a, um, I thought it had a parcel number and it doesn't. Otherwise I could look it up for you.
Oh, this kind of parcel number. Hold on.
This is probably the most incomplete diagram for information for slots blade I've ever seen. There's no of the law. Of the lots, we don't know where it is.
I'm assuming. They dimensioned the lots, they did, they did do that, but I just, it says it's off of Cedar Lake Road and I'm thinking this is right before you get to the clubhouse.
Well, there's no dimensions on the on the on the current. Thing, there's no dimensions on the lot, I can, you can kind of figure out what he's doing, I like, you know, the proposed agreement is fine. It's just uh the, you know, the current, there's. That doesn't have anything, there's no information there, so.
I have no point of reference, I don't know what I'm relative to, it's like, I I don't know if that vertical line or the area to the word the right. Is a street or if that's like, I don't know what I'm looking at.
I think it is the street because right under, on the first doc, or on the first page, right underneath lot forty, there's those one, two, three, four, there's those six vertical lots. And when you look down at the next one, you can see those same six vertical lots and the one all the way to the right is lot forty-one is a little bit wider. So I'm assuming that that's, but it would be nice to have the actual documentation, because we all know how assumptions work out.
If you scroll down to the second one, it does show it coming off of Cedar Lake, is that lot thirty-six?
Yeah. But thirty-eight.
I'm thinking the same thing, the only thing that size out there really that would fit this would be right there across from the golf course.
Well, just, I think it's just before, because Mr. Aldrich still owns the land, that land right across from the clubhouse that has the bridge going across to.
Yeah, he's, that's not this.
But up to that other subdivision. This is just south of that and it borders it.
Gotcha, so I agree about Fox, it would have bought up to where that sub is.
Yeah, it it'll be, I think so. But my question is, because there is, you know, township water along Cedar Lake Road. So when he develops this, he's going to be putting in hydrants and. And water curb stops each one of these lots.
I think that that would need further probably approval, I mean, we we have a sign off from, is that Doug's signature? For water and sewer department?
Yeah, I saw that, I'm just.
Yeah, so I'm assuming then he would, I mean, that's just saying he wants to split it off, but then if he's gonna do. Actually do houses on there, he's gonna have to come back for uh, you know, um that's just a lot split, so anyhow have to come back and um. Uh propose what he wants, you know, right?
It looks like he's gonna do a a a street back to kind of split those up a little bit with a call stack. If he builds that road, who's responsible for it?
It'd be the developer would be responsible for putting in the utilities.
For the util, yes, and then once the utilities are in, then they give it to the township when it's all finished, is that how that works?
They would turn it over typically, yeah, we have a few exceptions being on the road that I live on, so.
It would, it would have to be in our specifications to be considered.
That's where he would nail it down. So do we want additional information um for Monday to have a little better overview to make sure we know where we're talking about here?
I would just like to know exactly where it's at, but I think I do, I I'd just like to know location, I guess I can look it up like parcel too, so.
Yeah, that that current map is uh is a bit lacking, it would be nice to have a little bit more detail on that just for. You know, because.
But just, if it just had some dimensions of the lots, it would would.
And and a listing of where the street is, just so that we all know that, you know, we've got a point, couple of points of reference so that we can say, ah, yes. No questions, that's exactly where it is, we all know what we're talking about now and there's no confusion.
The proposed uh diagram is very, very complete, but.
Like, look at that beautiful drawing.
The other one, not so much, so, okay.
Okay, all right, and then we have uh two um, I mean, I, you know, we've been doing these forever, AYSO and here on um. Use agreements for AYSO soccer and Little League, so those are on as well.
Yeah, I just had one question on that, and if I might, on the uh the Knuckle Little League. One of the things they wanted on there was the Cushman cart, do we have a Cushman cart?
What is a Cushman cart?
You know, it's one of those, like a golf cart, I think.
Um, we must give it to them.
Yeah, I believe we do, it's parked in the shed over there.
Yeah, I think.
Because um Al usually hires somebody to go out and utilize that or uses some of our summer help. Cause they go out and use that cart to smooth everything out, I see him over there, because I live across from it, so I know it's parked in there. I have to assume if we own that shed, that cart is ours as well.
Okay, cause that was my whole question, it said provide the Cushman, the Cushman cart. I I didn't know whether we had a Cushman cart or not, but, okay.
And which 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 fields are these that they're talking about? And the Worksmith District, though, okay, that's what I thought, okay.
Yeah, the outdoor sports complex.
I love your reference to the Worksmith District, Dan, it makes us all happy.
You're welcome, Jeremy.
That was more for Todd, but I think he bolted already, so, that's all right.
I'm not calling it the flight zone, sorry.
Nah, nah, I'm right there with you.
Okay, all right.
Just a question about the agreement for here on East Knuckle, so I was curious because of item two, it says that the provide the Cushman cart. Do we, are we then contractually obligated to provide it, let's say it's, I don't know, I mean, is it? Do we know if it's working this year, I mean, this, a question of. Or do we then become responsible for providing something that was really maybe just a nice to have?
I wouldn't think so, but I mean.
You you would be, it's just like mowing the grass or two before it.
Right, but if the cart dies, we don't have to buy a new one.
Right, precisely my point.
That purpose.
Why? Well, that's my question, it's like, who are these, these are, this is just a league.
Does does anybody know what they use it for?
Yeah, it's just a league, but I mean, if somebody incapable of walking, I don't understand that.
It might be two uh cart injured players off the field, and you always see that when they're uh, somebody's injured, they don't want them walking around, they put them up on the cart and drive them out.
Do they use that to drag the fields?
Yeah, I guess they may do.
I don't see where that cart's even listed in here, what, you said it was under item two?
Page one twenty-four, item two, see.
Oh, I was, okay, yep, yep.
I could hack the Bill Hamlin, he would know.
Well, it does say at at our exclusive discretion, so we can.
Right.
I mean.
And it's still an ex- right. So, if we don't have it, we don't have it.
Yeah, okay.
It's at our sole discretion, kind of like when we sell the, sign the agreements with uh the chamber to provide stuff for Art on the Beach, but if something happens. And um we, you know, we have to jump to something else, we do it, so.
Right.
Okay, um then we have uh three informational items on there um on the report. So we're done with the board packet per se. Correct?
Yep.
Looks that way.
Are we gonna talk about keyless entry for the Township Hall and ARP fun usage, we're about, if so, I'm, I actually am gonna run to the girls' room. Just gonna say.
We shall anxiously await your return.
Okay, so so start talking, please, if you would like to talk about the keyless entry.
Is there, is there information on that, do we have, is there, if you guys gotten information on that or we need to look at or?
I I have not reached out and gotten any information, I've kind, I've uh, I've learned my lesson and I will not act without uh the board. Approval, so if you guys uh, as the board would like to direct me to, or Mitch, Mr. Mr. Mitchell to uh push forward and try to get some more information on that, I'd be happy to help him. Or if you'd like to, you know, if Mr. Mitchell wants to take that on and go find that information and let us know, that'd be fine too. But I, as far as I know, I don't think we have anything yet, we've just been kicking around the idea, you know, we're starting to lower the number of buildings we've got, so. We're gonna have to, and it would be, this would be the prime opportunity to do it. While we're switching all the files around from Ane after the auction and whatnot, and to start putting those plans in place, I believe, what do you think, Mitch?
I think there's a couple of factors, one, um let's, let's make some assumption that. We are not in any position in the near future. Uh of a relocation of the structure that I'm sitting in now, which is the Township Hall.
Unfortunately, that doesn't appear to be the case.
Two, the other would be um. If the Ane Medical Building is sold. Then we will have an issue that I think we need to address as well, which is where will those records go? Has been some discussion, maybe this is an option, maybe we would lease. Some space, at least for a period of time, from the new owner.
Interesting proposition you have.
That, yep, otherwise, we're gonna have to look at a construction of some facility for that purpose, and again, uh electronic. Key would be the most appropriate.
That's right, I can offer another so uh suggestion, you know, we have a number of storage facilities in this town. I don't know, there are varying sizes and smaller ones could be obtained for for departments with smaller needs. And um just saying it, just a possibility again.
The only fear I would have with that is uh, we would have to make absolutely sure that they would be uh.
Climate controlled.
Climate control and rodent control.
For sure, yeah, there'd have to be, we'd probably have to pay a little bit more than the standard unit. For, we'd have to get a premium one, if we're gonna store, you know, required documents in there, but I can't believe that of all the properties that we have, that there's not another building that would be. Feasible for this purpose. I think there was talk about something out on the, out in the, out in the uh, in the Worksmith District, that there were a couple of buildings out there that we might be able to utilize or. When we were talking about this in the future, but I I think that the discussion is uh is 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 due. I mean, if we're talking about selling the building, then we should probably just start making plans to get our stuff out of there, quite frankly, it's time to find a spot for it, so if uh.
If I could. Um, I've mentioned before, the old F and V building out where DPW is. Um, I don't know if, and um it is time for all the departments to go through their storage units and. Get rid of things, we have a record retention schedule through the state of Michigan that I'm pretty sure not everybody is following. Um, myself and Alan Strickland, he was the clerk at the time, and Gina Walker, his uh assistant. Went out there and did it one time before in building seventy, and let's just say, we got rid of two dump truck load sizes. Of documents that needed to be purged.
Really?
So, yes, and so I know that um, it was, it was incredible, Tim, let me tell you, I could not believe it.
No, I don't doubt it, it's not uncommon for for this guy. It's, you know, that's not, I'm not surprised, but uh when you mentioned Al uh. At that time, that's some years ago, so which means. On the the usual purging or the review since then, is that right?
Yeah, nobody's, I mean, I keep mine up to date now, we went through and literally. Put everything in order, put dates that people were supposed to get rid of their stuff on it according to their retention schedules for them. And separated it to all where they needed it to be together and had it in rows, like literally, all they had to do is go pull a row off and put the next row on. And that's where it was, but that's not the case again already.
Well, moving all the stuff from one building to another would be a primary uh opportunity for all departments to take care of that uh little bit of housekeeping there.
Yeah.
So and I um is that, I've never seen this uh, the building that you're talking about, maybe we should go look at it and see if it's uh.
I don't remember, I mean, I, you mean that little, like the pump station thing that had the basement, Jamie, is that the one?
No, the one, the one where their offices used to be with their um chemistry room and then they had a.
Oh, that one.
There, yeah.
Gotcha, that one, yeah.
So I'm assuming there's climate control and electricity there?
Yep.
And how close is it to the building that's uh currently being utilized?
Like you, like within walking distance, easy, I mean.
So we could.
Not even that.
Okay, well, the reason I'm asking that question is because if we're talking about electronic. Uh, you know, entry and all that stuff, it would be nice if we could connect that building to the internet, even in a minimal capacity. And I'm sure that IT right could give us some wireless bridges, so that we can bridge that building into the network while not in incurring additional recurring fees. From uh the internet service providers, so.
Yeah, and and moving forward from, because we, I mean, obviously with technology, we have different options for storing data. You know, I know in my, in my office, we have reduced paperwork quite a bit, so. Maybe if others go through their stuff and, you know, eventually we're not gonna need a great big place to keep all of our information.
Talking about going paperless?
I don't get all crazy now. I think we just make more.
Yeah, probably.
Yeah.
So is that a, uh, yes, we should go out and uh start looking at getting some uh, offer, some ideas on what system we'd like to use? Or are we gonna wait and see, uh wait and see what goes on with the uh, the file storage situation before we move on that or? Combination of both, what do you guys think?
I missed the beginning of the conversation.
We're discussing.
File storage, though.
Yeah.
I saw that the file storage seems to be separate from, I mean, file storage is one project and then this keyless entry is another.
Right, but the keyless entry cost and price is gonna be based on the number of buildings that we're looking at at utilizing it at, so that's I'd I. I don't, you're 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 absolutely correct, they are two different projects, I will, yep, I'm not gonna, I will concede that for sure.
And I'm not thinking we're gonna get a quote, I think we find out what's possible.
Right, look at some different vendors.
Yes.
Yeah, exactly.
Maybe we could put a, um, maybe Josh.
And and some do.
Right, you know, so, somebody could have, could have, bleh, put a question out on the listener. Um, to see what some other entities are using maybe, or is there even something with like, um, you know, the government contract pricing on something like this? I would assume with today's day and age and uh. Uh, what do you call it, terrorists and blah, 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 a lot more people have um better lockdown and stuff, so maybe there's a government contract on something anyways. That we can.
You know, that's a, that's an interesting question that I'm gonna have to bring up about the, oh, I'm writing it down, I'll ask you later.
Ask who?
The uh, we're talking about security and infrastructure with the whole terrorist thing going on, because there are terrorists and. And so, and we're now that we're getting all of our pump stations connected to the cell phone network for uh. So that, you know, we can remotely monitor those and remotely control them a little bit, would it behoove us to integrate with that, some kind of little security? So that we know if the doors of that complex have been opened. So that we can have a little bit of additional security at those facilities, since we're gonna have internet access there, I figured, you know what, hey, we'd. Bring it up, but that's, that's work, we're running over, so I'll, I'll ask that one later.
Right, sounds good, right. Okay, I don't know what ARP fun usage is.
Yep, it, is there a way you can allow me to?
No. Yes, I can.
Thank you. It is six twelve, isn't it? Sorry about that.
I know, I gotta remember what I'm doing, me, I always. Where is that button, security, what the heck? Oh, I think I go under participant, sorry, I have to remember every week, I think I go to you, where are you? Uh, make host.
Okay.
All right, you're the host, you're in control of the screen.
Thank you.
Yep. Who is it pouring, why Mitch is doing that, or Vanna is doing that, it's pouring down rain here.
Yeah, it is here too. Can you see it, I wanna make sure, can you see documents, there's American Rescue Plan funds?
Difficult to read, can you zoom in a little bit?
Uh, I will try to.
Actually, I have to move your face, your uh. Your face is right in the middle of it, sorry.
Try holding, hold down C T R L and scroll.
Are you talking to me here?
There you go.
Oh, there you go.
That's better.
What would we do without you, Jeremy?
I'm sure you'd manage.
Okay, so, um, and again, I know this sounds like a very odd, but the estimate, I don't know how you estimate to the dollar. But the estimate at this time is six hundred and sixty-seven thousand nine hundred and sixty-six dollars. That seems like an awfully precise estimate, but uh that is the. Most recent estimate of what we were to receive, the spending deadline would be December thirty-first, two thousand twenty-four. So. I did uh send to you uh a uh presentation by Baker Tilly, if you looked it over. If you didn't, that's okay, don't worry about it. Um, but I'll be honest with you, in looking at the various things you can spend it on. Most of the, there were some other segments, to me, that is items that really should be at the county's purview, not us. Uh, things like helping with low income housing and worker. That, that's not really us, so where can we spend the money on? Uh, there are three main segments that we could spend, which are water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure and broadband. Uh, there are three main segments that we could spend, which are water infrastructure, sewer infrastructure, and broadband. Um, so there has not been real specific guidelines about these spending areas. It's anticipated that some guidelines are gonna come out at some point, uh, kind of further elaborating what that all entails. Uh, but in looking at our master plan, there are areas of, that kind of connect to these three spending areas. And, and what I'm asking you, this is kind of a homework project, is to kind of have a discussion. I think, yeah, you should have a discussion with the planning commission and township engineer to kind of map out how best to use these funds. And I kind of talked about, uh, and you could see, uh, in a discussion with Row Engineering, that you kind of have to carefully use these. This is kind of a one-time gift. And you wanna try to maximize private and public leveraging of, of those types of funds to achieve results where they have the longest lasting and kind of contribute to our community in terms of revenue growth. So in examination of that, there are only under, and so I list the goal one, economics of place, and under that was a growth and investment area. This is define the growth investment areas based on availability of infrastructure in proximity to US twenty-three and four, F forty-one. Evaluate and select site within the G I A areas that are redevelopment ready. Now, you get that, that date that you see there is off of the master plan, and that was their anticipated date that that was going to be done. So that, again, infrastructure is mentioned in there under the, that portion of the master plan. You see, and goal seven, reinvest in ourselves under municipal asset management. Prepare a capital improvement program once the infrastructure assessment for Worksmith Airport mixed-use neighborhood properties is completed. Again, that key phrase, infrastructure assessment, that could be water, sewer, or broadband. Uh, or a combination of, of all three. Uh, again, and goal seven, which is reinvest in ourselves, coastal reliance. I'm trying to hurry, and I know you guys have been here a long time. Ensure all the shoreline development infrastructure is appropriately designed and protected to be resilient in the face of changing climate. Now, this one's interesting because the date on it is twenty-twenty-one. And I do not recall that we have ever talked about this to this point uh, in this calendar year. So that, obviously, that's something we should start talking about immediately. Cause it is in the master plan that we were gonna talk about it in this, in this, uh, calendar year. So let me move down a little bit here. So what should the township do now? We need to think real broad and strategically about the needs with the master plan in mind. And, uh, in that presentation that I gave you from Baker Tilly, they recommend the following. One, it would be to prepare a funding plan that consults, uh, stakeholders and establishes community priorities. Two would be to consider your accounting structure and internal controls in order to be ready to receive the money, segregate the funds, and track the funds. And I could tell you under number two, from the audit that we just did, and, and the single audit, I think we actually have some of that infrastructure in place, uh, with some Excel sheets and some other things that, the auditors already have assisted us on. So I think we're actually kind of in a, a better position than starting from scratch on number two. And number three would be consider preparing an investment plan for the funding. So the funding itself, let me go back up into that six sixty-seven, nine ninety-six, let's just call it sixty sixty-six, or six-six-eight thousand instead as a roundup. That we will receive half of that this year. We will receive half of that next year. In a conversation I did have with Row, we talked about, you know, we, we talked about a little bit tonight, our, our water main extension projects. I will tell you, you do not want to take these funds and then try to inject them into that. You'll kind of screw the whole thing up. All the grants, everything is based on certain formulas of existing funds and existing usage. This, again, it's a one-time gift, and we should try to use these funds as best we can in maybe areas that we wouldn't normally do so, but also to try to meet these goals under the master plan that we have agreed upon are our priorities. So what I'm asking the board to do, and I will send you this document, you can, I don't know, put it under your pillow at night or something, is start thinking about these particular goals and how that works, and start thinking of projects. And I think what we should do is have a future discussion about this at another work session and start developing my ideas of which of these or all of these are we interested in tackling with these funds? Feedback?
Well, I can tell you mine, one of mine, uh, specifically would be to at least use part of that money to fund the hookups for phase two. Uh, for the water main extension, we did phase two along Loud Drive. Uh, all of the other phases, the, the phase one that we did and the, uh, the phases that we're planning for this year and in subsequent years, all of the residents' hookups are being paid for. This was the only one where the residents had to pay for their own hookups. And I think it would be appropriate to use that money, or at least a portion of it, to pay for those hookups for that phase, phase two portion, uh, of the residents along Loud Drive. They are in, uh, in an area of concern based on, uh, the, the contamination from the base. And that was one of the reasons how we were able to get the grant in the first place. So, uh, to me, that would be, uh, the, a number one choice for using at least, at least part of those funds to, uh, pay for that.
Okay. That's a great idea, Bill. Are there any other people in, or reimbursed for hookups?
Were there any? I'm sorry, you broke up when you talked.
Were there any other people in other areas that did not get reimbursed for hookups?
Yes. There's any, anybody where, uh, Watermain is actually there. Um, they were not reimbursed, and neither were their, uh, meter pits paid for, um, if they put in a meter pit.
So could we broaden this beyond Loud Drive at this point?
Um, well, I guess I'll just segue to saying too, that, um, Rick, um, two things, we were asked to provide, um, there was an April second deadline, um, that's Row Congressman Kildie's office sent out request for, that we, um, I know Bill, you're, I mean, we forwarded to everybody, Bill, um, you had forwarded it, you know, you had asked about it too. We did make that deadline, and that had to do with Watermain, um, PFOS contamination and funding there. So we've sent that money in for that appropriation. We did, we did make that deadline. Um, Rick, uh, wrote up the proposal. I signed it. We sent it in. Um, and then the state of Michigan just reached out to us this week through, is it Jesse Osmer? I forget. Sorry. Um,
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's,
Yeah.
Through Allers, Sue Allers.
Through Allers. Um, they are looking, it's not a guarantee that we'll get it, but they are looking to do some appropriations as well. We just submitted that information to them within the last day. And that has to do with, um, again, PFOS and, um, service line connections and so on. They were specifically asking about that.
That's kind of spoiler alert from Monday, so.
Yeah, sorry. I, I, I burst your bubble.
That's okay. No, Rick was gonna talk about it, so.
Yeah.
And he still will.
Yeah. So.
But.
But just keep that in mind.
Yeah. So we may have, uh, kind of what you talked about, Bill.
Might be covered.
It may be covered with these other, uh, possible sources.
Okay. Well, that would be great. That's, on phase one, that's how we were able to get the funding to pay for the hookups, uh, Sue Allers' office and, uh, Congressman Kildie worked together to get, uh, funding from M E D C, I believe it was, about three hundred, about three hundred thousand dollars to pay for the, for all the hookups, uh, for the phase one project. So, because that again was a, was a USDA grant, which does not allow you to spend any of that grant money for, for hookups to, uh,
Right. On private property.
Property, so.
Yep.
Um, so if they can come through on, on this phase two and we can get that money for that, that's fantastic. Oh, I don't, you know, quite frankly, I don't care how we get the money, but I, I just think that the only fair thing to do is to, uh, be able to find money to, uh, to, to cover those folks so that they can get their, uh, what, cause they are in an area of concern. That's, that's one of the reasons why we were able to get the grant, million-dollar grant in the first place, is that's an area of concern for PFAS contamination.
That's, and on the topic of broadband, so E T I is a large, uh, a large enough vendor that they are also interested in broadband, and they can represent us in submitting grant proposal on the, on this topic. Um, you, it has to be a company that is capable of doing the work. So it can't be a small, small, uh, entity from the way it's been explained to me. Um, they have been wanting to get with, uh, us to talk about, uh, submitting a proposal. Have they reached out to you?
No.
Okay. I can put you in touch with them. So I will send you an email and, um, and yes, there is, there's supposedly money that's for, there for broadband, particularly because we're in rural area broadband, and there's a need. Um, so years and years ago, just a back, a, a little background, some years ago, back, uh, when the broadband was installed in the Robert Parks Library. I don't know what year that was. It precedes me. Um, a group of, uh, a, a group called, um, the Merit, uh, it was a merit organization.
The Merit.
That was created. Merit Network, correct, was created so that that particular, uh, so that broadband could be, could be, uh, installed. Um, that is how we are currently getting our, uh, fiber connectivity through the library. However, a number of the people who were originally part of that network have, have either lost or gone out of business or have been merged, and there's another, a number of organizational changes have occurred. So, um, so anyway, the point is that there is, there is a, a need here in this area, very much a need for broadband to be expanded. Um, there are a lot of people who do not qualify, uh, their, their internet speed does not qualify as sufficient minimum internet speed. And so, you know, so there's infrastructure changes, improvements needed. Fiber, for example, um, there's supposedly a, a fiber loop, that's something I just heard in the last week. There's supposedly an old fiber loop that was, uh, that was installed by the Air Force here on the base, uh, that was, um, it went through, I think, the housing area as well as, uh, the business district. However, that, that fiber, um, from my understanding, is a complete loss at this point. Um, that loop is not of quality that, um, that, that is useful today and needs to be replaced if we're actually going to have fiber on the old base. Um, that's a statement I, I make it, again, I qualify it again, as it's not something I have direct experience with, but um, E T I would have, uh, much better information about where could they have access to the maps that are current. So anyway, the point is, with that said, you know, I, 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 I say this because I look at the number and I go, I don't know. I don't think there's, we would need more money than this number on the, on the table. Um, and I just wanna make sure, but I, so I, I'm very interested in broadband, but I wanna make sure that our constituents who have had to ta- pay tap fees, um, are pay, are reimbursed for those tap-in fees um, for their sewer because they were stuck in this whole contamination problem. I think they should be a first priority. Um, if we can somehow get a guarantee that they will get reimbursed, great. If they can't, then, um, then I think we should use this money. I know that everybody, you know, uh, on both sides of the aisle are trying to get money for these people, but this has also gone for quite a while, and I think that, uh, I think we should, uh, I think we should actually decide to, to maybe take matters into our own hands and get this money allocated to our resident, uh, resident who are caught in the situation. Um, but anyway, I will get you a, a name and a, uh, phone number so that we can get you in touch with somebody who can talk about that separate, uh, separate grant. Like, sorry for the, uh, long answer here.
Now, the only question might be, can, uh, these ARP funds be used for something that happened in the past? That might be the only question that may have to be explored.
And that's always, that's always found in the details of the, of the grant itself. So I don't have a clue on that. I'm not familiar with it, so.
Okay. Well, I think everybody needs to review this and kind of get our thoughts together and, you know, um, come back, right?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yep.
Okay. All right. Not trying to hurry, but
No.
Yes, I kind of am. It's almost six-thirty. All right. So, um, are we done with that one? Um, all right. Consider the need, uh, to follow up additional information. I think we personally, yeah, I mean, that's for the agenda, right? I mean, we cover that on each item. Do we have our marching, I, orders on what we need?
Yeah.
To bring back. I think Tammy, I saw Tammy was on, um, the, uh, call, so, um, I'm sure she's diligently taking notes. Um, and then are you gonna, you don't have to give me control back, but I think I, right now we can see your screen. Just saying.
Right. Very diplomatic, Ann.
Yes.
Very diplomatic.
Yeah.
Uh, let's see. Back over to you.
All right. Or I could, yeah. Okay.
And I'm gonna make you the host there.
Okay. All right. So I'm just gonna go back to, um, share screen. I'm gonna, the agenda. Okay. All right. So you guys see this shared screen now is just the bottom of the agenda, correct?
Yep.
All right. So we're good with that? Um,
Yep.
Okay. So we're onto public comment, correct? Everybody agree?
Yes.
Very.
Okay. We do have a couple members that scarily enough had nothing better to do on Friday evening and the rainstorm and so I have Rosemary, Tammy Klein, and I believe, um, Brian Haley. Uh, yes. So I'm assuming I'm gonna ask Rosemary, I mean, Rosemary, if you would like to comment, if you wanna, I'm just gonna unmute you, I guess. Rosemary, if you wanna comment, you can unmute or raise your hand. Um, I know Brian usually takes a delay, but we'll see if Brian wants to do a public comment.
Were you calling on me?
Yes, I was. I just unmuted you.
Okay. Yeah, hi. Yeah, there's always that delay. Um, let's see. Um, Brian Haley asked, go to, hey, um, I'm talking, uh, let's see, Monday night, from what I understand, Mr. Mitchell and Mr. Dickerson presented themselves at the Friends of Fertah, which is fine, they're citizens, but in the chain of command, they are representing the board. They are employees of the board, correct? And they have contracts. All right. So when they go down to talk to the folks, they're actually representing you. Now, I'm looking at the vote, strategic insights, market rate, multifamily rental housing analysis. Now, this document was produced six months ago. And we all know that, or most of us know, that thirty, and their discussion mainly was on apartments. I was not there. But the discussion was a lot about apartments on Fertah or surrounding areas for this need for apartments. The problem being, when I read through this six-month-old document, there's no reference to the thirty-two brand-new apartments under construction from Tim Galton. Now, that is critical to what we're talking about with apartments, cause from this study, we're talking six hundred units. He's building thirty-two. Make the assumption he's gonna complete the task. Plus, he wants to build more. I talked to the gentleman. He seems to be a fine gentleman. He is a can-do guy. No pun intended. So even with him just building thirty-two, that drops you down five percent in the critical rating. Right now, we're at ninety-nine percent, uh, full rate, which is a bit high. But the optimum value for apartments, as we understand them, and it's in the study, is ninety-five percent. So you see, even with thirty-two, you're moving those numbers in the positive direction. And this is critical. So what I'm suggesting to this board, these are your employees. When they're presenting supposed facts that are six months old and not up to date, that's not proper. That's not proper and we need to get real on that. Uh, concerning Mr. Dickerson, I think he has a misunderstanding of what a park defined is. Uh, he has a problem with the word, a park is a large public green area in town used for recreation, well, that defines fertile. He's also been using language concerning crisis for these apartments, isn't that a crisis? A crisis is a time of intense difficulty or danger, that's not it. In fact, you're heading in the right direction, just what we just pointed out to you, just what I pointed out to you. Uh. You, you know, we have to be very careful with our language when we're talking to people, I'm trying to be. But that is, hey, I'm telling you, Mitchell, right now, that's false representation here. You're taking down, I don't know who did it, you or Dickerson or both of you, you took fourteen pages there. Of a hundred and forty page document that is old, it doesn't even reflect what's going on today. So I, you know, that's not right, so I hope we tighten that up. I still have a, a hard time getting the information from the November ninth closed session meeting of the prior board. Now, uh.
You're about eleven seconds left.
Alright, the Open Meetings Act requires that you have, the prior board had. Minutes in the closed session and you're to hold those minutes for a year. Now, we need to get this straightened out, I'm gonna get to the bottom of this one way or the other. So there should have been minutes taken for that meeting, Anne, for Ms. Richards, okay, we'll end it on that, thank you very much.
You're welcome, thank you. Okay, any other public comment? I think, uh, Rosemary ran away when I asked her if she had anything, just kidding, sorry, thank you, Rosemary, for attending the entire time. Um, alright, but.
She sent it, she sent a chat that says she didn't have any questions and.
Oh, okay, I didn't see that, alright, we thank her for attending the whole thing, alright, so with that, I'll take a motion to adjourn.
Oh, moved.
Alright, thank you, everybody, sorry, it was such a long one.
Have a great weekend.
Enjoy that ocean, Anne.
I plan on it, thanks.